Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Oxnard Planning Commission. Regular meeting for Thursday, January twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two. The time is six oh three. A quick housekeeping item in accordance with Assembly Bill AB three sixty-one. Members of the commission, public and staff, will be participating via teleconference. As shown on the agenda and online, please email all written public comments to planning@oxnard.org. Those wishing to speak may visit oxnard.org/city-meetings to fill out the speaker form or by calling eight zero five three eight five seven eight seven eight by three P M. The day of the meeting. During the meeting, a three-minute opportunity will be given to the public for additional members to participate. Please view the bottom of your screens for the call-in number, meeting ID, and passcode. You will then follow the prompts and be connected to the meeting. When participating in the meeting, please keep your microphones muted until your turn to speak. Because the meeting is electronic, all votes will be done by roll call. Lastly, for presenters, when needing to advance to the next slide, please clearly state next slide. That will conclude our housekeeping. We'll now go to our Madam Secretary to establish our form.
Chair Chavez.
Here.
Vice Chair Weho.
Here.
Commissioner Lopez.
He'll he'll be joined shortly.
Commissioner Meyer.
Here.
Commissioner Nash.
Here.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Here.
Commissioner Connolly is absent and motion passes. I mean, we have a quorum. I'm sorry.
Well, we'll say it's been a long day, Madam Secretary. So we'll now move to our next item, which is our pledge of allegiance. Mister Rozelle, would you mind leading us this evening?
Absolutely. Please, let's say, the pledge of allegiance to our flag already began. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Mister Rozelle. We'll now move to our next item, which is public comments for items not on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to address the planning commission regarding any item not on the agenda but within the subject-matter jurisdiction of the commission may do so at this time. However, the commission cannot take action on any items presented during public comments and will be referred to the commission secretary. All public comment speakers will have three minutes. Madam Secretary, just to confirm, we did not have anyone sign up for this, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Once again, in accordance with Assembly Bill three sixty-one, we'll go ahead and have our time, three minutes, to allow any additional members wishing to participate for items not on the agenda. Again, please view the bottom of your screen for the call-in, meeting ID, as well as the passcode.
And Chair Chavez, this is Scott Kolwitz in the chambers. As we are looking at the three-minute clock here, I just wanted to share with the members of the planning commission and the public that we did receive some correspondence for some of your items on your calendar today, and we have transmitted transmittal memos to all of you by email. One of them went out yesterday. It was a rather long transmittal memo with about eighty different public comments relative to ninety-nine high tide. That's item G three on your agenda. Today, about five fifty-five or so, there was another email that we sent that had a transmit two transmittal memos attached. One was for item G two, which is Blooming Organics. There was a single correspondence that we received for that one. And then we also received an additional approximately forty correspondences for ninety-nine high tide again today, in addition to the ones received yesterday. So again, those were all emailed out to you. We will repeat this again when those items are called, but I just wanted to share that with members of the commission. Those transmittal memos will are also to be posted online as part of the agenda packet for the benefit of transparency and for the public to be able to read those. The one from yesterday was posted, but the ones from today have not yet been posted. They will be posted by Monday. And when those items are up, we could also give a general summary of what has been included.
Sounds good, Mister Kolwitz. Thank you. Okay, that looks like we had our three minutes. Madam Secretary, did we have any additional members?
No, we don't.
Thank you. So we'll go ahead and proceed on our agenda to our consent agenda. We have nothing listed. Our next section is nominations and elections. The item E one nomination and election of the planning commission chair and vice chair to serve for the calendar year two thousand and twenty-two. Mister Kolwitz, would you like to walk us through?
Chair Chavez and members of the commission gladly. So the elections of your chair and vice chair either happen when we have all members of the planning commission nominated following elections from our city council, as happened in prior years, or for a year like this one at your first regular meeting of the calendar year. Last week was a special meeting. This is your first regular meeting. I'll go through the protocols of how the elections actually happen in just one moment. We had anticipated that the elections would happen today, but I also want to let the planning commission know that you do have an option to continue these to a future meeting when all of your current members are present. Not all of your current members are currently here. That said, if you choose to move along with the elections tonight, what happens is the chair will seek nominations. When a member of the commission would be nominated, we would look for someone to second the nomination. And then after we have exhausted all nominations, we would look for a vote of those of the commissioners to serve as chair. A simple majority is all that's needed to select your chair. Once we receive a simple majority on the the chair election, then we would we wouldn't continue with any additional votes for any other members to potentially become chair, and we would move on to the vice chair. And once the the new either the current chair would be renominated and appointed or a new chair would be selected by the planning commission. At that point in time, the chair who is newly elected would take over immediately. That's the general provisions of how this is intended to work. And if you have any questions for us, we're here to answer those questions. If not, we will turn it back over to Chair Chavez.
Thank you, Mister Kolwitz, for that. Again, commissioners, it was proposed that we do have an option this evening in order to continue and move forward as it it's already a gentized or to have this item continue to a future meeting. Commissioner Nash.
Thank you, Chair. First, a question for our parliamentarian. Are the current chair and vice chair prohibited from being renominated?
The the short answer is no. There's nothing in our bylaws which would prohibit the current chair and vice chair to be renominated and if a majority vote for them to be reappointed.
Okay, great. Thanks. I think that this is a matter that we should continue, just out of courtesy to our fellow and lady commissioners. So that's that's my motion.
And Vice Chair Weho.
My second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to continue this item to our next meeting, which is scheduled for Thursday, February third, two thousand and twenty-two. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seen and hearing none. Madam Secretary, if we can have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Nash.
Hi.
Vice Chair Weho.
Hi.
Commissioner Meyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Chair Chavez.
I and I'll just note that Commissioner Dr. Lopez is here. Commissioner Dr. Lopez, just real quick, the motion was put before for us to continue the elections to our next meeting, which is on February third, to allow for all commissioners to be here.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lopez.
I.
Motion passes.
Thank you. So that item will be continued to our next regular meeting of February third. We'll go ahead and proceed in our agenda. Our next item is their expertise declarations for public hearing items. Vice Chair Weho.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. I'll be recusing myself on agenda items H one, H two, and H three three due to federal statutes eighteen U S Code, sections two oh three and two oh five. As was hap- has happened last week, if we do happen to go past eleven P M., I will come back on if and when there is a motion to extend the meeting. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Dr. Lopez.
None. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Meyer.
None. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Nash.
None. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sanchez.
None.
Thank you. And for myself, I actually did a site visit for all three, H one, H two, and H three, and spoke to a couple of businesses in the area, as well as passerbyers on those items. So that is the extent of my expertise, a site visit. So we'll go ahead and sorry, it wasn't H. It's actually G, G one, G two, and G three. So we'll go ahead with our first public hearing item. G one, project name, Kind Lifestyle Market LLC, doing business as Kind Lifestyle Market, commercial cannabis retail, special use permit. This is planning and zoning permit number twenty-one dash five sixteen dash eleven, special use permit cannabis retail located at nine eleven nine eleven South Oxnard Boulevard. A request to permit the operation of a three thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight square foot commercial cannabis retail facility within an existing commercial building on a zero point twenty-seven acre site within the downtown general zone. Propose of element includes tenant improvements, installations of an interior wall partitioning, plumbing upgrades, upgrades to an existing fire alarm system, security upgrades to the existing building, insulation of a new secure doors and windows, and exterior facet improvements. Cannabis retail operations will be conducted from nine A M. to nine P M. daily. This is filed by Christine Byers on behalf of Kind Lifestyle Market LLC, doing business as Kind Lifestyle Mark.
It appears that Chair Chavez has frozen momentarily, hopefully just momentarily. Everyone else seems to be moving. But Chair Chavez.
Yes.
You froze on us as we were getting through the the calling the item to order. If we just want to go ahead and summarize the recommended action at that point in time, staff can go ahead and pick this one up and make some comments before we turn it over to the applicant team. It looks like Chair Chavez might have frozen again. On Chair Chavez's behalf, I'll go ahead and finish reading the recommended action for the benefit of the public on this one. Chair Chavez.
It looks like I'm having some technical issues, so I do apologize for that. Quick summary, G one, kind lifestyle market, doing business as kind lifestyle market. A recommendation is to find the project environmentally exempt from sequel guidelines, section fifteen three oh one, and adopt the resolution approving planning is only permit number twenty-one five sixteen dash eleven. We'll go to our city staff person, Jose Coyle, or Mister Kolwitz on this item.
And I will turn it over to Jose Coyle, our associate planner.
Good evening, everyone, Commissioner Chair Chavez and everyone else joining us tonight. Staff does not have any further updates regarding this item.
Thank you. I do see the applicant team does have a presentation. So the applicant team, please introduce who you have with you. And when you're ready to advance to the next slide, please clearly state next slide. Thank you.
Hi, this is David Osborne, and I'll be talking on behalf of the applicant team. We have today with us, we myself, Brett Carr, who is the C E O of Kind Lifestyle Market, Jesus Camacho, our Director of Community Engagement, David Bearano, our Director of Security, and Christie Byers, who is our architect. We also have a landscape architect available to answer any questions, Rick McDonald as well. As you see in this first slide, we're looking at making significant improvements to both the interior and exterior of the building. Will be making improvements to the parking lot landscaping and lighting. We believe that this location at nine eleven South Oxnard Boulevard, once these improvements are done, will be an engine for a development revitalization of the Five Point Neighborhood, as well as creating significant employment opportunities and economic benefits for the neighborhood. Next slide, please. Our team is led by Jesus Camacho and Chief David Bearano and promotion of our good neighbor policy. Jesus Camacho is our Director of Neighborhood and Community Engagement, and he oversees all community engagement, nonprofit support, and will be our liaison with local residents as well as the neighborhood councils. Jesus is really the perfect person for this role, as he is a Locksboro native. He has family roots in Oxnard since the eighteen eighties and has a great passion for the Oxnard community and has been deeply involved with the community, completing his bachelor and M B A degrees from California Lutheran University. We'll have a number of tools that Jesus will be able to use. We'll have an online feedback program for the community. We'll also have a physical drop box for those individuals who don't have online access. They can write us their comments as well. We'll have twenty-four seven direct public access ownership as well have public open houses. We've been engaging in our community involvement since two thousand and nineteen when we reached out to the I N C O. We've also had multiple meetings with Hobson Park East and with the Five Points Neighborhood Councils. We've met individually with both Pat Brown, President of the Five Points Neighborhood Council, as well as Jack Villa, President of the Hobson Park East Neighborhood Council. We did presentations to both neighborhood councils, as well as the community workshop in August, September, and October of two thousand and twenty-one regarding our project. Now, Chief David Bearano will be leading our safety and security program. He'll be our liaison with the City of Oxnard's Police Department, and he'll provide ongoing safety and security training to our employees. Chief David Bearano was chief of police for the City of Trulavista. He was chief of police for the City of San Diego and was appointed by President George Bush as United States Marshal for the Southern District of California. So he has significant law enforcement experience. He also has very specific and extensive cannabis security experience. Chief David Bearano, as President of California's Chief Police Association, advised both Governor Jerry Brown and then Attorney General Kamala Harris on the implementation of the safety and security regulations for Prop sixty-four. Prop sixty-four was the proposition that legalized recreational cannabis in the state of California. So David Bearano not only understands the cannabis rules and regulations for safety and security, he actually was involved in the drafting and creation of those rules, and he'll be an essential part of our team in ensuring that Kind Lifestyle Market represents the gold standard in compliance. Next slide, please. Our team also consists of Brett Carr and myself. Brett Carr has over eight years of experience in the cannabis industry, beginning with the founding of Urban Greenhouse in two thousand and thirteen. Urban Greenhouse was located in Phoenix, Arizona, and Brett sold it and then moved to Ventura in two thousand and nineteen so that he could promote cannabis opportunities in the state of California and specifically Ventura County. I have over twenty-five years of experience as a law firm attorney general counsel and executive team member. Over the past nine years, I've served as general counsel for Good Time Design, which is a multi-state hospitality entertainment company with more than eight hundred employees and fifty million dollars in annual sales. So I have significant experience in a, you know, multi-layered, complex organization in ensuring a robust regulatory compliance program for that company. Now, Urban Greenhouse is really going to be the blueprint for what we plan on doing in Oxnard. And what we see here is an image of an example of what Brett did when he really transformed a dilapidated building into a world-class cannabis market that was voted the best dispensary in the city of Phoenix in two thousand and eighteen. In addition to being a successful retail store, Brett also included a community center and meeting room in order to promote the community engagement and benefit the community. He supported numerous nonprofits throughout the state of Arizona and generates significant revenue that of over twelve million dollars a year that created a significant tax basis benefiting the community. Next slide, please. As I stated before, that is the model for what we're looking at doing here in Oxnard. We look at transforming the building into a beautiful world-class cannabis market. Will be promoting commercial activity and employment opportunities in the Five Points Neighborhood, and will believe that will really become a magnet for commercial activity in downtown Oxnard. Will have lighting and security to really promote the protection of the business, the employees, the customers, and our community. And in response to the request from the D D R C, we're going to be including So we're going to be including pedestrian focused design and signage as well as landscaping by a local landscape architect. That will really focus on indigenous drought tolerant plants. Next slide, please. As I mentioned before, Brett had a community meeting room that really supported involvement, engagement in the community. That's what we're looking at doing at Time Lifestyle Market. There's an outbuilding garage actually. That really kind of demonstrates the dilapidated nature of the condition of that property. We're going to be transforming that art garage into a community meeting room. That will both promote the arts in the community as well as become a community gathering place for the neighborhoods. Hopefully that community gathering place along with our business will really become a magnet for the commercial activity. And revitalization of the five points neighborhood community. Now this art garage I do want to mention is concept only. It will require a separate planning committee approval. However, it is. Very dear to our hearts. It is an essential part of our business and how we plan on being engaged with the community and benefiting the community. So this is a central part of what we plan on doing in Oxnard. And we really believe it will complement the retail cannabis operations and promoting that area of Oxnard. Next slide, please. We'll also have an interior of the premises that will reflect the aesthetics and improvements that we are doing on the exterior of the premises. Now, one thing I specifically want to focus on with the interior of the premises and how we have the building designed. Then we'll actually have a separate entrance and exit, each one with one-way traffic, each one with its own security guard. Now this has a number of benefits to the operation from a security standpoint. By having a security guard at the entrance and then a separate security guard at the exit, that'll be in the retail showroom floor. We will have security guards that will be able to monitor the entire public area of the premises. Both the lobby and the retail showroom floor. They'll also be able to complement each other in being able to monitor the parking lot area. And because they'll only be responsible for. Monitoring one-way traffic that will really limit the amount of distractions that they could be subject to. And ensure that they're that much better at performing their job of promoting the safety and security of our operations. Our employees and the community at large. And that's just, you know, I think one piece of how we really look at design of the building. In order to promote the safety and security of the Oxnard community. Next slide, please. In addition to our support for the local five-point community, we'll also be supporting the community of Oxnard. With a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar one-time donation to the City of Oxnard and any donation of one percent of revenue to the city. As well as any donations to those nonprofits that really promote the cultural heritage and history of Oxnard. You know, we'll support organizations like the Boys and Girls Club. But organizations like In La Cetch, organizations like El Castillo del Candado. Those are organizations that really reflect the community of Oxnard. Well, by supporting them, we'll be supporting those organizations that really promote the cultural heritage. Of Oxnard as well as promoting the immigrant labor community that is such a central part of Oxnard's cultural heritage. We'll also be supporting the community of Oxnard with employee-paid volunteer hours, forty hours per year. So employees could be paid a full week worth of wages to donate their time to the community. As well as volunteer support for the local neighborhood council and local neighborhood communities. Appreciate the opportunity to present on behalf of Kind Lifestyle Market. And the team and I are more than happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding our company. And our involvement in the Oxnard community.
Thank you, Mr. Osborne, for your presentation. Commissioners, what I would like to do is open the public hearing for this item. We only had one person sign up. Before we move into any questions from the commission. Is, I'll look to the commissioners if there's any objections to doing that. I don't see any, so we'll go ahead and open the public hearing for this item. Again, this is Kind Lifestyle Market LLC, doing business as Kind Lifestyle Market, item G one. Madam Secretary, just to confirm, we did not have anyone sign up for this item, correct?
I'm correct.
Okay, so what we'll go ahead and do is we'll do our AB three sixty one time three minutes. And to allow any additional members of the public that wish to speak on this item, the opportunity. Again, you may view the bottom of your screen for any public, for calling number, meeting ID as well as. Passcode. And staff, if there's anything that you want to add. Based off of the presentation, please do so. Thank you. And I apologize commissioners, there was actually a person that signed up for G two, not G one. So I misread that, but we'll do the public hearing. And then we'll move into commissioner, commissioner questions for either staff or the applicant team.
Chair Chavez, this is Scott Colwitz from the chambers. Just to let you know, we do not have anything additional to add to the presentation. But like the applicant team, we are available for questions if the planning commission has any.
Thank you, Mr. Colwitz. And then in the event that my camera continues to, or internet connection goes down. We will look to Commissioner Sanchez as being the senior member on the commission and take over in my absence. Since our vice chair had to recuse himself, so I'm just throwing that out there. Okay. So we'll go ahead and close the public hearing for this item. And we'll turn to our commissioners if they have any questions of either the staff or the applicant team. And I believe I had seen, there we go, Commissioner Meyer.
Thank you, Chair. My question for the applicant is, can you. Return to the visual of your, I guess, your lobby and then your, your sales floor and. Maybe help to explain how the security works. I'm more used to seeing designs where there's a, like a modest sized lobby where people wait upon entering for. Verification before they can enter the sales floor and I didn't just quite see how that layout worked.
So our building is structured. Do you want to go to, I think, two more pages down, please?
Yeah, there we go, there we go.
So our lobby is significantly larger than typical lobbies. That's actually a result of the structure of the building itself. This building originally was two separate buildings. So there is a dividing wall that effectively splits the building in half. And as a result of that, you know, we're going to have a much larger lobby than what is traditional at a cannabis retail store. Although we do plan on adding features like having a coffee bar. Having a kind of an experience similar to, let's say, like a hotel lobby experience. Where people can really, you know, relax and enjoy the experience in the lobby. So that's the reason why the lobby is much larger than you normally see. And then what we'll have with respect to the security guards, if you look on the picture on the left. That will be the entrance and that'll be to, to the lobby. Now in the picture on the right, it's a little hard to see on the visual. But if you see the, the two individuals walking near the end of the store. That wood window area to the left actually has a door in it. And that will be the exit. So what you'll have is you'll have a kind of a flow where they'll be able to walk through, check in at the lobby. A bud tender will then come and greet them, walk them into the retail showroom floor. They'll be able to then peruse the various offerings with the bud tender servicing them. When they decide to make their purchase, they'll be making their purchase at the rear of the store. That is where the POS systems are located. And then they'll be exiting, you know, straight right outside of the retail showroom floor into the parking lot. Each one of those doors, excuse me, I may get a little bit of water, please. Each one of those doors will have a security guard. So as a result of that, we'll have security guards basically based at the. West end and east end of the. Of the parking lot. So those security guards, you'll have one that'll have a view of the entire retail showroom floor and then be able to have a view of the parking lot. From the west end, the other one will have a view of the retail showroom floor. And then have a view of the east end of the parking lot. And that way they'll be able to monitor both the entire. Public area of the business as well as the outdoor area of the premises.
I see. So what I'm looking at actually is on the left hand, it's the lobby and then where the person at the. Far end of that space is walking out, they're walking into the showroom.
Yes.
So the showroom is on that other side. Okay, I think, I think I can see how it all works then. Great. Thank you. That, that's my only question at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner Meyer. Commissioner Nash.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. First, I have a question for Mr. Mr. Rizel and this is. Concerning our cannabis ordinance. Does the ordinance specifically prohibit depictions of, you know, the marijuana leaf or, or bud? That would be visible from the, from the street?
Yes, it does. That is not allowed as part of the exterior signage of, of the individual dispensaries.
Okay, great. Thank you. I also asked staff if they had any sort of idea as to the number of minors. That would walk past this site on their way to and from Driffl School. Do, do we, do we have any sort of anecdotal? Number on that?
Commissioner Nash, this is Scott Colwitz. Unfortunately, we do not have that data, anecdotal or otherwise.
Okay, I, I wouldn't really expect it to be much because of the nature of the boulevard itself is inconducive to pedestrians. But I am a little bit concerned about Driffl School and, and exposure to the. To school kids. So I hope, I hope that the applicant keeps that in mind that they, that, that there may very well be kids. And, you know, we don't want to get into a debate about whether, you know, this is appropriate for minors, but it, it is something that. You know, tugs at the back of my mind. This is a question for the applicant security team. And. How, you know, do you want your customers, you don't want your customers to loiter in the parking lot? You, you want them to move on as quickly as possible. How do you, how do you ensure that that happens?
Commissioners, good evening. This is David Bearano. As mentioned, we have. We'll have more than sufficient security guards onsite, additional security patrols. Which means we'll have twenty four seven security coverage of the, of the business. The guards' responsibilities, and we're working very closely with Scott Swinson, the Oxnard Police Department will have very detailed. Instructions from the moment they arrive until they leave on their duties. Obviously, besides the screening of that of customers going into the business to ensure they're of age. And they will also monitor the parking lot and ensure that individuals are not loitering. These individuals will be asked to leave if they comply, the guard will move on. If not, the police department will be notified. But in most cases, individuals will leave once they're notified by security. Additionally, the guard at the rear of the business at the exit will also monitor the alleyway and the other sections of the lot. We have state-of-the-art cameras, security surveillance cameras, dozens. High definition facial recognition within twenty five feet. And we'll have the capability to be able to actually write instruction at any time of the day. If we see any individuals in the lot, loitering in the alley, that they're being monitored. And that the police department will be notified if they don't move on. So we have a number of different between technology. Personnel, security patrols to ensure that individuals do not load or at the business or consume or use any other products at the site.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I'd like to add onto that, I'd like to add onto that as well that Kind Lifestyle Market will actually have a customer code of conduct. That we promoted so that be posted at our establishment. That customer code of conduct will require that our customers respect our neighborhood with their conduct. As well as not loitering in the parking lot or creating any disturbances in the parking lot. And we'll notify those customers that if they breach our customer code of conduct, that we will actually. Refuse to serve them. The, you know, the, one of the benefits of the cannabis industry is that we do get the IDs of identification of our customers. So just like a bar and restaurant can exclude a patron that causing disturbances in the bar and restaurants. We're going to use those tools to exclude a patron that's going to disturb or cause problems in the community. You know, we expect ourselves to be professional. We expect our employees to be professional and we also expect our guests. You know, to act in a professional manner that respects the community at large.
Okay, thank you for that. And I think it's doubly important for this site because it's, it's a very visible location. That I, I have one more item for the planning staff and under all three. Dispensary S U Ps tonight. Mention was made of the Chief of Police of the City of Port Monee. And I wasn't sure, is, is, is his name Chief Selena or Chief Selinas? Because under all three, it was, it was Chief Selena and I don't know if that was a typo or.
Commissioner Nash, that was a typo. His name is Chief Selinas with an S at the end.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. And that's all Chair Chavez. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Nash. Commissioner Sanchez.
Thank you, Chair. Just a question. Sort of wanted to know your business plan and reasoning I'm sort of curious about is, at this point, there's, you know, there's going to be some competition in the area. There's kind of, there's eight businesses in Moneemi. And I think very shortly, there's going to be just about the same amount in Oxnard. So just, what sort of strategies do you have that would make you successful? Obviously, we want you to be successful.
Yeah, so I appreciate that question. You know, I, I think that, you know, our location on 911 South Oxnard Boulevard is unique in a lot of different ways. Number one, it's centrally located in the city of Oxnard. And it's actually, although there are locations to the north of us, and most of them are not on the major thoroughfare. So we are on a major thoroughfare in the center of the city. And in fact, we picked the location because of its proximity to the Five Points intersection, which has a tremendous amount of traffic, which is both a negative and a positive for the community. But from our perspective, you know, it will result in a lot of eyes on our business. Our plan is to, you know, create an environment that from the start is really inviting to the guests. You know, that's why we're really focusing on the landscape and exterior aspects of the premises and property in order to make it very inviting to guests to come shop at. We think that the art garage and community art gallery will be an activity that will really complement what we're doing at the premises by that support of that community will ultimately also support the business itself. And one thing I can say is, this is very similar to what Brett Carr did in the state of Arizona, you know, what his approach was. And that approach was very successful. He ultimately ended up running what we understand to be the single busiest dispensary in the state of Arizona. So we have a tremendous amount of expertise in the cannabis industry, a tremendous amount of professionalism in our business operations that we believe will really set us apart and make this location, you know, really a shining example for the cannabis industry throughout the county of Ventura.
Sounds wonderful. And best, best of luck to you and hope you're very, very successful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sanchez. Any additional questions from the commission? I just have a few questions. Mr. Coral, question in regards to what is, what is a city under the cannabis ordinance classified as special, special, it's a special interest or that they require a specific bus per zone? Can you repeat your question? I'm not exactly sure what, what the question is.
Chair Chavez, this is Scott Colwitz. I might be able to give an assist here. I, I think it's the sensitive uses that we establish.
Thank you. Sensitive, wrong word. I apologize. Sensitive uses, what is classified as a sensitive use and the established buffers?
Yeah, so there's a sensitive uses that the ordinance allows for. And those basically are going to be, one, any education school K through 12, whether it be public or private or charter or something in the hybrid sort. The next sort of limit on that is then going down to youth centers, which include public parks and that sort of, sort of use. And those also include some sort of like youth centers and like I mentioned, parks. And then that basically concludes our sensitive uses. So residences are close proximity to something else is not something that we classify as a sensitive use.
Okay, I asked that question because there is an adult daycare.
Oh, excuse me. And yes, you're correct. Commercial daycare centers for children are also another sensitive use. I forgot about that one here.
For children, but not adults.
Correct, for children.
Okay.
And that would, that, that list comes from the state. As long as there are commercial daycare, the state basically facilitates those services and agencies. And that's how we were able to tabulate the, the map.
Okay. For the applicant team, Mr. Camacho, as the neighborhood outreach person. The outreach, it was mentioned that you spoke to Hobson Park as well as Five Points. How many outreach individuals did you actually speak with in regards to that? And what was the feedback from them in regards to the proposal of coming into this location?
We had pretty positive feedback from both the Five Points Neighborhood Council and Jack Villa's Hobson Park East. Everybody was pretty positive. We had no negative feelings whatsoever during both sessions.
So how many would you say actually attended your guys' outreach?
It was during COVID. So we're still during COVID. So Five Points Neighborhood was a little bit more people attending, I would say about 10. And for the Hobson Park East, it was minimal, probably about two or three.
Okay. Outreach to the businesses, was that done? And what was the feedback of the businesses in the area?
We did outreach. We didn't really get any much feedback from them. So we kind of just, we're gonna wait a little bit and then we're gonna go in there and actually start nurturing relationships with them. So we're gonna do that as soon as possible. But we had no negative feedback from anybody.
Can you clarify that comment in regards to no, no feedback was taken, but outreach was done? What do you mean by that?
Well, as the S U P, we actually delivered those to everybody in the 600 square, 600-foot zone. We had nobody come back and actually give us any feedback other than the people that, you know, we talked to at the neighborhood councils.
Okay. The school district, the Oxnard Elementary School District is right down the street. Was outreach done to them?
I believe they are not in the 600 speed.
Okay, but the question was, was there any outreach given to them seeing how they are down the street from you guys?
I do not know. I could find that answer out for you, but I know they were outside of the zone.
Okay, I asked that because there is testing that takes place on the districts during the districts' hours that has children, families going there constantly. So that's why I asked that question. Uh, thank you. Former Chief, but I don't know, a quick question in regards to the number of guards that are going to be onsite. And I apologize if I missed it. How many are going to be during the 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM?
Yes, Commissioner, once again, good evening. Again, we, we want to be really careful when we discuss security measures, security plans, in order not to jeopardize or compromise the safety and security. But I can tell you that a minimum of two will be onsite. We will also include security patrols. We will also add additional security based on the number of customers, based on deliveries, et cetera. So using a combination of patrols, security guards and, and adding additional security when needed. But I can assure you, be more than sufficient. It's something that we will monitor on a daily basis.
I appreciate that number of, from minimum of two. That has been a concern of mine. And this isn't going to have an actual live person onsite 24/7. And off-hours, you guys are going to be using as a security system, correct, as far as the cameras?
Correct. Again, we have obviously like state-of-the-art alarm systems with dozens of contact points, fusion, motion, et cetera. I mentioned the high-definition cameras that will operate fully under low-light conditions to capture facial recognition. Those cameras will be monitored on a 24/7 basis. The alarm will be monitored on a 24/7 basis. Security patrols, and again, the ability to communicate with someone after hours if we see some suspicious activity at or around the surrounding area.
Now, without getting too much into detail, the response time in the event of an incident taking place on the property during the off-hours, what is the business looking at for as a response time?
Well, again, Commissioner, it would vary on the type of activity occurring. Obviously, a crime in progress, that would be a 911 call. Any potential, if we see any crime involving life or death, again, any emergency, crime in progress would be a 911 call. For example, if a security patrol, the person monitoring the camera sees what appears to be some activity, not really, really can identify it as a crime, but something that the police should be notified on. The police would be notified on a nine, non-emergency number. And as you know, response times by police varies depending on the type, type of call, time of the day. Officers could be there in minutes, it could be longer. But I can assure you, any, any, any suspicion of a crime in progress, any danger to life, property, et cetera, that would be a 911 call.
Now, past applicants that have come before us, they've talked about that their security guards are going to be onsite 30 minutes before the opening and 30 minutes after the closing. Is that the same practice that you guys will carry on?
Correct. And actually, we're looking at probably one hour before. If we have deliveries and a lot of work before opening. But at a minimum, yes, they will be there 30 minutes before opening and after closing, a minimum of 30 minutes. But security guards will not leave until the last employee leaves, leaves the business. For some reason, employees are working extra hours. Security will remain onsite until the last employee leaves and the, and the business is secured.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Chief. Mr. Osborne, a couple of questions. You talked about that a one-time donation of $250,000 to the city. And then you'll obviously do your 1%, but you're also looking to go a step further and donate towards nonprofits within the area? So you're actually exceeding that 1%?
Well, in addition to that 1%, we are looking at making annual donations to nonprofits throughout the community as well as supporting the INCO. So we are looking at making contributions above and beyond the 1% and the $230,000 donation.
Now, is there a labor agreement in place for your employees?
Uh, well, currently, we don't have any employees.
Correct, but is there?
Labor agreement in place. You know, we don't have a contract in place. I mean, certainly, we are supportive of having a labor peace agreement with the local unions, you know. You know, my, my approach to employees is to, you know, really respect the rights of employees, respect their interests. You know, I think a labor peace agreement actually is beneficial to both the employer and to the employees. And what it does is it provides the employees access to union representatives. In return for that access, it ensures the employer that they will not be subject to labor stoppages or interferences with their business operations. So for me, I view a labor peace agreement as a win-win and it's certainly something that will support, you know, once we begin our operations in the city of Oxnard.
Okay. You mentioned the INCO, which is the Enter Neighborhood Council Organization, which is a group within the city of Oxnard that represents all, I believe it's 46 neighborhoods councils. You said that you're going to plan on supporting them. What exactly are you supporting? And then this will actually lead into a couple of questions for my staff.
Well, the INCO is charged, you know, really with representing the interests of the neighborhoods, representing the interests of the residents, promoting community activities in the neighborhoods. So our plan is to support those organizations and supporting the needs of the local neighborhood areas. You know, this can be done through charitable contributions. It's can be done through volunteer activities. You can do trash cleanup. You can do graffiti cleanup. You know, there's a number of things that you can do in order to benefit the community in addition to making those charitable contributions. And our approach is to really focus on the local needs. And the best way we think to focus on the local need is to really focus on partnering with the neighborhood councils.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Mr. Rizel, question. The INCO, although it's not, it's one of those tricky organizations within the city of Oxnard. And I know there was a couple of comments made at the city council of council members in regards to the INCO. But are they allowed to accept charitable donations from any organization or group or individual?
They are not a separate legal entity per se. So to the extent that this applicant is approved and wishes to make contributions, we would need to work with both the INCO and, and the applicant in order to ensure that it was an appropriate way for the INCO to get money either directly or to benefit projects which they were interested in supporting.
Okay, I appreciate that. Commissioners, any additional questions? If there's none, then we'll go ahead and move into deliberations at this time on this item. Yeah, Commissioner Meyer.
Thanks, Chair Chavez. I guess maybe more of a comment to the applicant. I think it's important to be aware that I think the vast majority of the applicants that have come forward for approval have had LPAs in effect with, say, UFCW is, is probably the most common, but I don't know that it always has to be UFCW. So you don't have to wait until your employees are hired to move forward with that kind of a agreement. So I would, I would encourage you to explore that. I think for a lot of people who are labor-minded, this being a, a town that is a very blue-collar town, that, that can be a difference maker. And when people are comparing from the expected 16 dispensaries in Oxnard they might choose from. That's, thank you.
No, I, I, I appreciate that. And certainly, you know, our plan is to reach out, you know, to local union representative. You know, once we're in the process of, you know, establishing the business. You know, for us, you know, this is going to be the first store in the state of California. It's going to be probably opened, you know, eight months from now, nine months from now. So what we're looking at doing is getting through the S U P process and beginning the outreach that'd be necessary with respect to the, you know, LPA, you know, once we're, once we're through this process. Kind of one, one step at a time for us.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dr. Lopez.
Thank you. You know, just general comments, certainly to the applicant. Thank you for demonstrating an interest. Certainly for your time, energies and investment in putting together an application to bring your business to the city of Oxnard. And I'd be remiss if I didn't say that I had that moment of pause for the comment that Commissioner Nash mentioned in terms of the proximity to the school. Although it might be just shy outside of the buffer zone. Nonetheless, you know, it is, you know, one of the applicants that has been closest thus far to a sensitive, you know, use or, or just, you know, a, a educational, I'll say, facility and institution there. So just want to make sure that you continue to just, you know, just have that and share that concern that, that certainly some of us commissioners have, certainly that, you know, parents of small children and, and small families have. And to be cognizant of that with your, you know, marketing and, and other efforts, business efforts. To echo the comments that Commissioner Meyer just mentioned, you know, it hasn't always been this way. I think our community certainly has grown to become certainly a Certainly a lot more pro labor, pro, you know, worker friendly, and so thus far, the majority of applicants, although outside of our scope here at the Planning Commission. Certainly has been more favorable and press supportive of the applicants that have taken those proactive steps to. Do it, reach out to. You know, the UFCW or other labor organizations, just to ensure that, you know, we are meeting that. Low bar for what we hope. You know, businesses will, will provide for their workers because their workers, you know, are residents of our community. I think above and beyond that. I very much appreciate your forwardness to say that you're looking to donate additional. Or make additional donations above and beyond what the city requires. What I've said thus far to the applicants that we've supported thus far is that, you know, your success is our success and. You know, if approved, I certainly wish you the absolute best, you know, with the business that, that you do attract and that you do get. And that you, you know, just continue to be, you know, just extra kind as that community partner and that, that corporate. You know, with the corporate responsibility that, that we are sensitive to. Something that may set the city of Oxnard apart from, from other jurisdictions in the state of California is that we've been slow and deliberate. We've been very methodical, we've been very caring about the cannabis ordinance. You know, we weren't necessarily a leader who came out of the gate, you know, to be quick, but we wanted to be sensitive to. The potential risk of opening the doors to cannabis dispensaries and, and other businesses. And so, you know, it's one thing that, that we take to heart. As commissioners, as, as residents of the city, and so thus far with those, you know, just. I'll say. Points of concern, the proximity to the school, the sensitivity to, to our youth and our children. I'm sure as, you know, any parent anywhere would certainly, you know, just kind of have that at, at the forefront and want to make sure that you continue to. Just be that responsible business and corporate partner here with us at the city and so. I don't have any questions and I have to say that I am certainly inclined to support this like I have been. You know, with the majority of applicants that we have seen thus far, so thank you all so much.
Appreciate, appreciate that and, you know, we'll certainly, you know, take all these recommendations to heart. You know, we're not going to treat them as recommendations, we're going to treat them as directives. From the planning commission to do the things that you requested. Certainly, I, I think reaching out to the district office for the Oxnard School District is an important thing to do in order to address and. Soothe any concern, you know, that they may have, you know, regarding the cannabis operation. You know, we're certainly. Are going to be supporting our employees, you know, we are going to be voluntarily complying with the prevailing wage ordinance of the city of Oxnard for, you know, our full time employees. Will be also be implementing a Fair Work Week. Which will promote full time employee, a full time employment for those employees who want full time employment. So that will do is ensure that employees are, are receiving both a fair wage and receiving fair hours. We'll be having a scholarship program for our employees as well as a, a job training program with them, so I think, you know, we're really looking at. Doing a lot of things to really benefit our employees and really promote their success in the community of Oxnard. You know, admittedly, you know, we haven't gotten on top of the LPA, which it sounds like we should have. But we are certainly going to be making that a priority for our organization as we move forward.
I would certainly encourage you to, and thank you for that. You know, and the last thing, you know, I think oftentimes with, with those applicants that aren't, you know, applying under the, the social, our social equity program, you know, and. And for folks who may not be more intimately familiar with our, our community in the city of Oxnard. You know, I, I certainly do appreciate, you know, the contributions to, to the Boys and Girls Club. I know you mentioned the La Ketch, you mentioned the INCO. But there is a long list of community based organizations and nonprofits that are doing extraordinary. Work, especially at the grassroots level, level, at the neighborhood level. And so although I have no critique, I think, you know, our out of area applicants are quick to, to point out the Boys and Girls Club. Who do remarkable work, I have to say no critique, but you know, just also, you know. With time, I think that you'll have an opportunity to familiarize yourself a little bit more with your clientele, with. You know, our community and so there are just so many more organizations that are doing extraordinary work. That I would encourage you to, to, you know, familiarize yourself a little bit with and consider, you know, if, if approved. You know, to, to support, you know, I'm a firm believer of, you know, you know, in doing great work lifts all of our boats. And so, you know, as a local coastal community, you know, I, I definitely see that in a different way. But, you know, just, there's so many great people doing great work and, you know. You know, can, would encourage you to, to. Get, get, familiarize yourself a little bit more, you know, with, with those folks who are doing just that critical. Important work to fill gaps and needs in our community, which have only been, I think. Highlighted more in the past two years with COVID, but no, I certainly do appreciate you looking to go above and beyond with. Your additionable, additional donations and contributions to our community. It's certainly important. And something that we all take to heart as we continue to be stewards of the public trust and. Obviously ambassadors for our community, not only for those of us here now, but certainly the next generation. And so, again, thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Dr. Lopez. Any additional comments or deliberations from the commission? I'll just provide my comments and then we will either take additional questions or comments or look for a motion on this item. A lot of it was already kind of said by my fellow commissioners in regards to the LPA. Every, all the other applicants, all eight applicants that we've already approved, already had it in place before they came before us. The other concerns that I have is in regards to. Although it's not within that six hundred feet is Driffl School. It's zero point two miles, which roughly is a little bit over a thousand feet, not very much, but a little bit over a thousand feet. Which is about a four minute walk. And I did it this morning. Does not take long. We have students that go to Driffl School from. The Mobile Home Park right across the street from Oxnard Boulevard, right across the street where your business will be at, the Mobile Home Park. One thousand one hundred and fifty six students. And of those one thousand fifty, one hundred fifty six students, at least. Eighteen to twenty two percent of them will cross by your business. Those are, that's just what it is. These are the kids that are coming from all the neighborhoods in the surrounding area from the Five Points. It concerns me. And I'm a little bit disappointed now in the quality that we're starting to see now. When we first started this process. Our first applicant, he picked a location out off the freeway. No homes, no real businesses around. No need for real community outreach. And then as we started seeing our applications come in along Vineyard Avenue. We started hearing more community outreach. And it was actually very excessive community outreach that we all commented that it was actually great. But this one I'm hearing, well, we did the bare minimum that is asked. And then we'll go ahead and work on it later on. That's what I heard tonight. And that concerns me because of the fact that there was only sixteen spots. That we expect better from those that are trying to come into our city. Especially if they're not local residents. It concerns me that the proximity to the school, it concerns me the proximity of the school district that does have students go. There to get tested. It concerns me that there is an adult daycare, although that is not a sensitive use. It concerns me that this could potentially cause more traffic in the area that's already heavily congested, as already mentioned by Mr. Osborne, that Five Points is a heavily congested area for traffic. This really concerns me with this project. And again. Roughly. I'll, I'll, I'll be generous and say fifteen residents that you spoke out to of two neighborhoods. And you haven't received any negative feedback, it's not something that I'm going to rest my confidence that good outreach was done. In this community. The biggest thing for us is our families and our, and our second thing is our community. And I don't believe this applicant team actually met the standard that I believe. Needs to be met by each applicant that comes before us. Of course, this is not about my personal preference or my personal feelings on this. This is about whether you guys can meet the, the findings that we are charged with looking at. And I'll leave my comments at that. Commissioners, is there any additional comments or questions? Commissioner Nash.
Thank you, Chair. Great comments from Dr. Lopez and our chair. I agree one hundred percent if there's one. Issue that will turn. Oxnard from being a pro cannabis city to a not so pro cannabis. City is if we start to hear from parents that their kids are being exposed to. To the cannabis industry and in, in ways that, 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 that we don't agree with, so I. Hope that the comments that were said tonight are taken to heart. And that you continue, that the applicant continues to. Reach out to their adjacent neighbors and businesses. That can't be stressed enough, the importance of doing that. But having said that, I'm ready to support this and I will make a motion to that effect.
Okay, so your motion is to move.
To be categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to CEQA. And adopt resolution two zero two two dash XX approving the special use permit.
Thank you. It's been moved. Is there a second? Commissioner Meyer.
Second.
It's been moved a second that the planning commission find the project to be categorically exempt from environmental review. Pursuant to California Environmental Quality Act guidelines, section fifteen three oh one, existing facilities and adopt a resolution twenty twenty two double X approving planning and zoning permit number twenty one dash five sixteen dash eleven, special use permit cannabis retail subject to certain financing conditions. Is there any deliberations on that motion? Commissioner Meyer.
Thank you, Chair. I, I appreciate the applicant's presentation and what they're, they brought forward. It seems clear that they've, they've met the requirements. Um, I think, I guess I have a word of concern and caution for our commission and I, I'm happy to be corrected. But my feeling is, my concern is that. That we're not necessarily judging all of the applicants on the same criteria. When we make sure that they are applying appropriately, they're approved appropriately and they're meeting the requirements about sensitive uses. In accordance with the, the application and, and the regulations that we've laid out. We're, we're doing our job, we're making sure that they, they did their due diligence with community input. With canvassing local businesses and then, you know, advising them that other businesses, other applicants have. Taken certain steps in terms of labor, etc., which isn't central to our responsibility even either. I guess I'm just concerned that. Were. The first eight, I think were unanimous except for one. And then, last week, we had a very different experience. Where the applicant did their due diligence, they, they proved their points, every concern that was raised by community members was effectively rebutted. I think the facts weighed. Fully in, on the side of, of the applicant, but it seemed like. A, a majority of commenters that had negative comments that didn't necessarily have. Factual backing or evidential but were concerns. That are perhaps antiquated or, or just were never correct in the first place. Seem to sway some of the, our, my fellow members and that concerns me. Because we're, we're trying to get a fair shake and I think that could come back to haunt us if applicants see that. They're not being judged on the same set of requirements. So I, I guess I just want to share my concerns about that. My understanding is that cannabis is not. Considered an adult use in, in the way that. Say adult bookstores or other things that could be concerning for. Being within a community in close range of children might be, so the concept of children. Walking around and noticing that there's a cannabis dispensary near their neighborhood or along their way, walking through. To my understanding, that shouldn't be something that would be a concern for us, but really is. Important for them to understand and understand, here's the nature of how cannabis fits into us, into our community. It's twenty one or over only and it's here and we don't hide it in a dilapidated. Dark part of town, it's, they're located in areas and they're, they're located brightly. With beautiful designs and we're not trying to hide it and that's what I'm concerned is that. Some of us seem to be concerned about it being seen by. By people under twenty one or children. It's a point for discussion, it's a point for education, this is something that. I think we, we play an important role in the city in helping to. Separate stigma from fact. So. That's my expression of, of my concern and. Wanting my commissioners to, to explore if they have biases against cannabis that. Aren't necessarily grounded in. Evidence, but are, you know, stigmas that have been carried on for centuries. So with that, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Meyer. Any additional deliberations on the motion? I'll just say real quick, and this is not to have a draw, long on conversation, but. I don't believe any of the commissioners, all seven of us have a bias. I believe we take each item as it comes. It is our responsibility to do just that. But it is also our responsibility and Commissioner Dr. Lopez has made this comment, it's that we. Are responsible for being good stewards and the champions of our community. And it's, I don't believe it's a stigma in, in, in terms of how. Let me back up. I don't believe people are trying to hide what cannabis is. I believe parents. Want more control on how it's introduced and when it's introduced to their kids. Versus somebody else introducing it. But again. Our responsibility is to look at the project. And see it in a way, does it meet all of the findings? It is not to put our personal preference on it. Now, in terms of us questioning, I believe we've been pretty consistent. We've asked about the labor, we've asked about community impacts, we've talked about traffic, we talk about architecture, we talked about security. I, I feel like we've hit all those points and been consistent. So. I'm not sure, Commissioner Meyer, if that sort of addresses it, but again, I, I feel like we've been pretty. I feel like we've been pretty consistent with it. And yes, the last applicant last week, that one was very different from the eight that we've already heard. So it's a very interesting conversation, but we take it as it comes. Each one is viewed on its own merits and and we take it that way. We don't cookie cutter our approvals. So if there's no further discussion or deliberation on the motion, Commissioner Meyer?
Thanks, Chair, and I appreciate your response definitely. And I think the findings is absolutely where we want to be. I think the concern really arose from a sense that negative commentary that can be vociferous and concentrated while not having solid findings to back it up. I don't want to see that swaying us if that makes sense. I want if there's a hundred people that are vociferously against something, but they don't have a reasonable grounding in why they just think it's a bad idea. I don't know that that counts any more than one person who has a reasonable evidential grounding for why they are supportive of something. So thank you for supporting some dialogue. I know it's hard. We often don't have a dialogue space and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Commissioner Meyer. Any additional comments? Seeing and hearing none. Madam Secretary, if we can have the roll call, please.
Commissioner Nash? Commissioner Meyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Dr. Lopez?
I?
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Chair Chavez?
No.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and proceed to our next item, which is item G two. Project name Blooming Organics LLC doing businesses elevate downtown Oxnard commercial cannabis retail special use permit. I'm just going to summarize this before my connection freezes up on me again. This is going to be in an existing facility located at one fifty six South A Street within the downtown general zone. The proposed development includes an upgrade to fire alarm, security system upgrades, plumbing, partition installing and partitioning as well as new secure windows and doors and exterior improvements. Cannabis operations will be from nine AM to nine PM daily. This is filed by Mario Rios on behalf of Blooming Organics LLC doing business as Elevate Oxnard. City staff person is Jose Coyle, associate planner. Again, the recommendation is to find the project category exempt from CEQA guidelines fifteen three oh one, existing facilities and adopt the resolution approving planning and zoning permit number twenty one dash five sixteen dash twelve. Subject to certain findings and conditions. We'll turn to our staff if they have any additional comments on this item.
Chair Chavez, thank you for that introduction. As far as staff, I'll turn it over to Jose in just a second to double check if we have anything else to add. But I did want to make reference again that we submitted the transmittal memo late this afternoon. Right before this meeting, we had one correspondence from Consuelo Contreras. Her comments essentially had asked the planning commission to consider the placement of this facility relative to other uses that are nearby. Excuse me, and with that, I will turn it over to Jose to see if he has any additional questions at this point in time. And staff will be available for any questions you may have of us.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle.
Yes, Commissioner Chair Chavez, there is nothing additional that I wish to go ahead and bring forward to the commission as of this time.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Does the applicant team have a presentation?
Yes, the applicant team does have a presentation if we can go ahead and note that if that's what the commission was just to do beforehand.
I apologize, Commissioners. I haven't even been asking. We just been doing this trend. Are we okay with hearing the applicant give their presentation and then open it up for questions for both? So I don't see any objection to that. Okay, so we'll turn to our applicant team if introduce yourself and your team joining you this evening and then you can proceed with your presentation.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Kvitsky, CEO and founder of Elevate. Here at Elevate, we pride ourselves on providing an elevated shopping experience to everyone who visits us. Currently, there are two Elevate locations, one in Woodland Hills and one in West LA. And we look forward to opening our next location here in Oxnard. Through all of our operations, we've had never had any compliance infractions and we work very hard to preserve that level of integrity. Next slide, please. The retail location is twenty five hundred square feet in size. Roughly fifteen hundred square feet will be used for retail and the remaining one thousand square feet will be used for back end operations. The storefront will not have any form of cannabis logos or advertising visible from the outside. Next slide, please. Our store locations are purposefully designed to provide the sense of luxurious retail location. Architectural Digest recently released an article listing our Elevate Woodland Hills location as one of the twelve most luxurious cannabis retail stores in the US. Inside the store, there's absolutely no live product in reach. Everything is in drawers or displays that would need the help of an employee to access. Our inventory backstock is not kept on the floor. All inventory is kept in a secure safe room off the floor. Next slide, please. Elevate shopping experience. Upon entering the storefront, guests will be greeted by a receptionist who will check IDs and allow guests to enter the showroom floor with the help of a budtender. Past receptionist is our luxurious showroom showroom floor. This is where budtenders will guide guests through the store and provide insight wherever possible. Once guests compete, complete their selections, they will head to the register for checkout. Behind secure doors will be our backend operations. This area is not accessible to guests. Only employees will have access to this area. Elevate ensures that all of our staff members are experienced and knowledgeable about all products we carry, especially those that cater to our medicinal patients. We regularly invite representatives from our brands to come in and provide specific product training to our staff as well. On the data databases, we see patients who suffer from range of medical conditions such as chronic pain, cancer and epilepsy. Our staff instructs our patients on how to use products in the safest and most effective manner. Next slide, please. At Elevate, we pride ourselves on contributing to each and every community we belong to. We look to bring jobs to the community and commit to hiring locally. Elevate has committed to a profit sharing program with employees to further incentivize and support our staff. Elevate has committed to a starting wage of twenty dollars an hour and health benefits to be included. We understand just how important employees are to our business, so we do our best to keep them motivated and properly compensated. Here at Elevate, we believe in promoting from within. We regularly promote employees from entry level positions into management positions, giving all of our staff an equal opportunity to grow within the company. I would also like to add, we're a proud member of local seven seven zero UFCW with LPAs in place at all of our locations. Next slide, please. We believe in genuine commitment to each community we operate in. As proof of our continued commitment to the community, we host an annual holiday toy drive to give back to local families and children in need. This holiday season, we took part in a toy drive ran by the Oxnard PAL and look forward to continuing this tradition. We were so excited to give back and begin connecting with the community we hope to call home. Additionally, we see each community that our store is located in as a partner. We've also recently held a virtual open house to encourage any open dialogue within the community. We wanted to hold a time to listen to any concerns or questions and go ahead and answer them. Not everyone may be as excited to see us here, but we want to be sure that we can allow them the opportunity to be heard and whatever possible, make adjustments to reach a compromise so that all parties can be happy. Next slide, please. In the event where a community member has any concerns or questions, we have set up a procedures in order to best hear them and provide a solution. We have appointed a director of community outreach, Adrian Lopez, a native of Oxnard. Any questions or concerns will be directed to Mr. Lopez, who will then follow up with a community member with the solution. We look forward to hearing feedback from the community. Next slide, please. Here at Elevate, we take the safety of our staff and community incredibly seriously. We have trained security onsite during operating hours, video surveillance and a security protocol for each location. After hours, we plan on using a live monitoring feed to monitor the location. We went in this direction after listening to the advice of Scott Swinton, a member of the Oxnard Police Community. Our team focuses heavily on ID verification. No customers allowed in view of products without a valid form of ID. Any underage visitors will be immediately removed from the property. We do not permit the sale of product to those under the legal age of consumption under any circumstances. We have had locations near schools or other points of interest that garner a young crowd and we have never had any issues with preventing unauthorized minors on the property. At each location, the first step is to have each guest ID checked. No ID, no entrance whatsoever. Next slide, please. Thank you, everyone, for your time. The last thing I would like to add is to introduce myself again. I'm Kevin Kvitsky, the CEO and founder, Nicholas Keefe, Chief Operating Officer, Mario Rios, Chief Product Officer, and Adrian Lopez, Director of Community Outreach. Thank you again for your guys' time tonight. We really appreciate it.
Thank you for that presentation. Very quick. So Commissioners, any questions that we have for the applicant or for staff? Commissioner Dr. Lopez?
Hi, good evening. I'd like to just hear a little bit more about the outreach that you did due to the drawing a blank here on the immediate neighborhood, but above and beyond the immediate neighborhood just to the businesses along the A Street corridor and some of the general feedback that you heard from them.
No problem. Adrian, would you like to chime in with that?
Yes, I, Commissioner Lopez, yes, I actually spoke to Enrique, the owner of Pits, Tires and Wheels, also Miguel, the owner of the Automotive Center, which I believe Enrique owns the commercial area back there. I also spoke to Sister Consuelo myself. I had a good thirty minute conversation. It was actually Monday this week with her. I spoke to Jess from A Burger. I also spoke to the gentleman that owns the tire store behind Radio Lacer, which is Joel. So everybody was, you know, was welcoming. Sister Consuelo, of course, she has opposite's view, but I reached, you know, we had a great conversation. I'm a God fearing man. She strong Catholic. And we had a good conversation and she'd be I just basically expressed her, we will be respectfully, you know, able to hear whatever she would have to say to us and anything, any help that she would need or anything, we will be there to to help with anything she may need, even if we have she has an opposing view.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanchez?
Thank you. Just a question. It's it looks like there's going to be, if approved, possibly another so another business just like yours, more or less within a block or so and just because of that, I'm sort of curious, you know, do you have like a plan to to, you know, be able to be successful if you're going to have another cannabis business somewhere close by?
Humbly speaking, I definitely think, you know, we'll be okay. I think with Elevate, we're an experience first and foremost, and we're also a destination store. And, you know, we have been throughout the years, you know, next week have been on one corner with three dispensaries before. So, you know, we've always said there's there's plenty for everybody, but I think with Elevate, the difference between us and other operators, again, humbly speaking, is that we're we're just a different experience and we're a destination store. We carry a lot of products that a lot of patients and customers can't find at other local dispensaries. So I'm confident that, you know, we will do well.
Well, very, very good. You you sound very optimistic and that's a good way to be.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sanchez. Commissioner Meyer?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, to the applicant. The the visual of your location outside and inside. Can we can we revisit that or did I miss something that I didn't recall seeing a a thorough visual of what the property will look like and where it sits in relation to other properties? Okay, I remember the indoor view. Did we have an outdoor view? Okay, so that's actually, I thought when you were talking about that location, that that was actually one of the other locations you were showing as an example. So that's that's the location that we're talking about here then. Okay.
Correct.
Great. Do you have a can you can you provide just a little like walkthrough on how the the secure entrance, access, exit, how that all kind of works out?
Absolutely. So when you enter through the the front door, you'll be greeted by the receptionist that's at that at the counter. And once you're you're verified and checked in, you'll come in through the ingress egress through the security doors and then you'd be on the other side, which there is some images there for the showroom. Then you'd be greeted by one of the sales associates or budtenders. You know, go through with your shopping experience and then exit through the egress on the other side, which is, I guess, would be to the left in this image on the screen.
Great, great. Thanks. That's very helpful.
No problem.
That's all my questions at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner Meyer. Any additional questions from the commission? Commissioner Dr. Lopez?
Good question. I'm just a little, you know, we certainly have received you know, great interest along, you know, more the northern part of of our city along the vineyard corridor from applicants. I was just curious in terms of like what brought you or what particularly interested you about the downtown corridor and the A Street corridor, you know, for you?
To be honest with you, Commissioner, personally, speaking with family, friends out in Oxnard, the revitalization of downtown and what the city's trying to do. We felt Elevate would be a great fit to come in there and just again, help, you know, revitalize, you know, the area and help bring it up and, you know, be a team member with other businesses and the community within.
Certainly. Yeah. And and did you consider, you know, other other areas before ultimately deciding on on this site on A Street?
Absolutely. We actually narrowed it down to three and this location was the one that we decided to go with, which was all was was a real estate purchase as well.
Nice. Right. I think for me, just as I've seen it, your presentation thus far. You know, it wasn't until the last seventy two hours that I began to review the the packet and and the materials for this week's meeting and the applicants, you know, and I'm not quite sure in terms of of, you know, the actual footage, but, you know, along A Street, we have, you know, many successful, you know, small businesses. What was that?
I apologize, but we're not in deliberations. We're only doing questions. We haven't taken public comment yet. I know we we did change the procedures on the last item, but we didn't carry those over to this one. So I apologize.
I'll hold. Great. Thanks.
Thank you. Any additional questions from the commission? Just keep it in line. And I apologize, I'm not I'm not uninterested in tonight's conversation. I got my booster shot this morning and I think I'm starting to feel some of the effects of it, but neighborhood outreach, the feedback, and and I'll start with our, actually, we'll start with the applicant team. Mr. Lopez, what was the feedback from the outreach from the neighborhood? The surrounding neighborhoods? I believe this is in the Wilson neighborhood.
Correct. Yes, I spoke to
I believe you just muted yourself, sir.
There we go. Yes, I so I spoke with the surrounding businesses. As I mentioned earlier, everybody was welcoming. Some of the families around there. Also, I have some relatives that live nearby. I spoke to him as well. They were open to the Some of the families around there. Also, I have some relatives that live nearby. I spoke to him as well. They were open to the, the opportunity. Like I mentioned earlier, Sister Consuelo was the only person that was really opposed to, to us.
Okay, but as far as residents in the area, was there any outreach for that? Because I did walk that area this morning. There are some residents in that area.
Yes, there is the residents on, on First Street. I did a walk around and speak to a few families, which I actually have some family members. I tried to get in contact with the Oxnard Wilson Senior Center. I couldn't get a hold of the person in charge, and however, I will be trying to get in contact with them.
Thank you. And you've already mentioned the business outreach and no negative. Everyone seemed very welcoming to it, correct?
Yes, except for Sister Consuelo, but I had a great conversation with her, thirty, about thirty minute long conversation with her.
Okay. For our, our city staff person, Mr. Coro, I, I understand that sensitive uses aren't, they're extremely limited, which I find very odd, but the public library that is right there on the corner, is there any issues that the city sees having with that, with the cannabis dispensary location? Proximity? Or Mr. Colwitz?
I would be happy to address that issue. When the City Council considered the cannabis ordinance, they looked at a range of sensitive uses and considered the possible addition of such things as, as churches and residential. And in the end, the City Council adopted the specific list of sensitive uses, which is currently included in, in the ordinance. So only the list which was adopted are the ones that the council chose to go forward with. I, Chair Chavez, I understand though your specific concerns with the library across the street, I think in the same way as with our last applicant, which is nearby a school, I think it puts a burden on the operator to ensure that their use does not become a nuisance. As, as you know, there, every operator's CUP is up for renewal on an annual basis. So the city has kind of a strong ability to not renew the permit if the applicant does not properly police their business and ensure that there are no negative impacts on the neighborhood. So even though this location is by the library, we do have, we as the city have the ability to ensure that this will not have a negative impact on the neighborhood. Otherwise, their permit will be revoked.
Mr. Rosell, keeping in line with that, the city, you know, last year was very proud that we established the Navigation Center that is actually supposedly going on the other side of the old bank that was there. Do we see any issues with that being there? And what are the rules and regulations for individuals being able to participate in those living in the Navigation Center?
I can't speak to the specific rules and regulations, although I know that in our current homeless shelter, there are rules and regulations about the times in which you have to arrive, the things that you can bring in there, and whether or not you can, you know, be intoxicated or visibly high. So there are always rules and regulations for any kind of navigation or homeless facility. But in the same manner as we believe that cannabis retail dispensaries can operate within reasonable distances from residences and schools, in the same way, we believe they can operate a reasonable distance from the Navigation Center, from the library, and from other uses, as long as the operators follow the rules and regulations. And I want to make it clear, we have no indication that this operator would not meet the rules and regulations, but we just wanted to remind the Planning Commission that the city has a robust set of tools in which to ensure that each retail dispenser operator does follow the rules and does not have the negative impact on our community, which is very important for the City Council and for staff, and, and obviously for the residents of the city as well.
I appreciate those comments, Ms. Rosell. Any additional questions from the Commission? Seeing and hearing none, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing portion for this item and take public comments. Madam Secretary, we only had one individual. Is that individual on the call this evening?
No, we, we have one, but he's not on the call.
Okay, so what we'll go ahead and do, and in accordance with Assembly Bill 361, we'll go ahead and have our time three minutes. And members of the public wishing to participate may do so by viewing on the bottom of their screen the call in number, meeting ID, as well as the passcode.
Chair Chavez, it's three minute and I haven't received any new speakers.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We'll go ahead and move back to our Commissioners. Any additional questions or any deliberations that they want to do at this time? Seeing and hearing no deliberations. You know what? Seeing how I technically didn't say the public hearing was closed. Madam Secretary, I do see our one speaker on the call. Let's go ahead and bring him in.
Hello, good evening.
Yes, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Commissioner and Honorable Planning Commission Members. My name is Sean Maradian. Thank you very much. I'm sorry that I logged on late. I'm here in support of the applicant for this agenda item. I've known these gentlemen for, for many years. I have no financial interest in this project, however, I have worked with this team on other projects in other municipalities. They're upstanding guys. They're family guys. They do what they say they're going to do. And they've delivered every single time over the past several years and have had the pleasure of doing business with them. Kevin Kvitsky, Nick, Mario, the whole team, great group of guys. I myself am a commercial property owner, property manager out of Thousand Oaks. You know, know the value of a good quality tenant, know the value of a good community partner. I would absolutely vouch for these gentlemen and give them an opportunity to plant roots. I know that they're not going to disappoint the community and they're going to be a big asset and add a lot of community benefits. So I support staff's recommendation for their application, and I hope this commission does the same. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm glad you were able to join and provide your comments. So at this time, I'll go ahead and officially close the public hearing for this item. Commissioners, any additional questions or deliberations before moving towards motion? Commissioner Dr. Lopez.
It's deliberation in general, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. You know, I have to say, I very much appreciate the Commissioners' questions here, and certainly to the applicant, as I've mentioned to the previous applicant tonight, certainly do appreciate you showing an interest in, in expanding your business into the city of Oxnard. As you may or may not know, our city has been very slow, deliberate, and methodical in rolling out our cannabis ordinance for many reasons. You know, I wouldn't necessarily say that we are, you know, a more conservative, you know, town or, or city whatsoever, but I will say that, you know, it does with just the evolving, I'll say sentiments towards cannabis in, in, in general. We certainly have looked at each applicant on its application, on its model, on its business plan, on its concept, its field, and, and what you all have put together. You know, I did have initial reservations, which is why I was asking the questions about the A Street corridor. Have you had explored other parts of town and whatnot? Certainly do appreciate your, you know, perspective, your interest, your focus on wanting to contribute to the revitalization of downtown. But I'd be remiss if I didn't say that I also had, you know, that ounce or iota of concern of your proximity towards our public library, our main public library downtown, as well as, I think, the point that our Chair Chavez brought up in terms of the homeless shelter. You know, homelessness is proving to be a challenge for communities, not only up and down the state of California, but across the country and across the world, as an equity has only, and I'll say economic equity has only become a greater issue for, for folks. You can't go a day or a night, an evening, without watching the evening news, you know, and seeing challenges around homelessness. I think a headline I read this week was just speaking to the high percentage of mayors across the United States who are frustrated because they can't do more. Perhaps because it's not within their jurisdiction, it's not within their resources, it's not within their budgets to be able to do more to address the issue. But certainly, again, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the proximity. I think for us in the city of Oxnard, coming more recently in the past year to identify our homeless shelter to be on Second Street, just around the corner from you all, you know, does make me pause in terms of us undermining our own efforts, undermining our own goals, undermining our own, you know, priorities to try and, and, you know, address this larger issue. It's not always, you know, addiction. It's not always drugs. It sometimes is more compounded, mental health, you know, larger societal issues. Certainly, you know, I'd like to think that in the world we're living today, many people are, you know, one accident, one paycheck or two paychecks from homelessness. It's just the world we're living in. And so, you know, I have to say that although I did have those, you know, little warning points of concern or flags, you know, your, your, your business that you proposed tonight looks to be, you know, discreet, looks to be conservative, looks to be professional. You know, I will say that Mr. Rosell, our Council, City Council, Council SEL Attorney gave me a little bit of reassurance. As you all know, your permit is up for renewal every twelve months. Lord knows when we'll see the, the homeless shelter established, functioning up and running. You know, I'm not sure it will happen in the next twelve months. You know, but, you know, certainly I, I would hate for that to be, you know, the primary reason for, for me not being able to support you all. You know, and I only share all of this because, you know, unlike our, our social equity applicants who are more familiar with, are intimately familiar with our, our community, our challenges, our nuances, our culture, you know, our out of area applicants such as yourself perhaps aren't fully aware to know like, oh, dang, the public library is a block and a half or a block away. The new homeless shelter that they've just proposed after years of homelessness shelter, or homelessness challenges in downtown around our Plaza Park area is also going to be just, you know, a hop, skip, and a jump away on Second Street as well, you know? And so I bring these to bring them to your awareness, to bring them to your consciousness, to hopefully bring them to your priority, to just be cognizant of that. We've been slow, we've been methodical, we've been deliberate for a reason. And it is because of great care that we have and great responsibility that we feel to our community as long-term or lifelong residents. I'm sure you would feel the same way about your community, you know, and your neighborhood, Mission Hills. And so, you know, to that end, I will say that I was reassured by our counsel with Mr. Rosell's comments and a reminder to you all that these are on twelve month renewable. And if challenges do arise, it will be something that will, there will be, you know, concern and potentially growing, you know, perhaps opposition to you all. But at this point, you know, you know, I'd have to say that just on everything that we've seen, certainly the due diligence of staff, the entire city organization with the conditions that they've put in place, security, otherwise, I'd have to say that I am more at a place of, of, of reassurance. And, you know, as I said, just knowing that these things may come up for you all in the next twenty-four, thirty-six, forty-eight months. You know, and so, you know, with that, I am inclined and leaning towards, towards certainly supporting you all and welcoming you to our city. But know that it is one of those that, you know, the city of Oxnard is not a Facebook city. I'd like to think that we are our own case study. And so with that, I would strongly encourage you to, as you move forward, and if approved, that you, you know, do take the time to become that good neighbor, that responsible business, you know, and get to know the people of our city and as well as our challenges, our aspirations, our goals, our priorities, and to help us, you know, move collectively in that direction. And so, as I've said to everyone we've suffered thus far, if approved tonight, I certainly do wish you the absolute best of luck in growing your business, being successful. Because as I've said to others, your success really is tied inextricably to our success, in part with the one percent, you know, community benefit that you all will be giving. But I certainly encourage you, and I hope that you would consider being even more generous. You know, we are a community of hardworking families and folks and individuals who want the same thing for, you know, not only our families now, but certainly, you know, I see, you know, a guest of ours this evening with a, a small baby on her. And so, you know, it is looking for that next generation, right? So, you know, I just wanted to highlight those points in hopes that you take that to heart and hopes that you, you know, if approved tonight, you do come in to our city, not only with that great success, but with that great investment in our community now, and certainly, you know, for the future and the next generation. So thank you so much for showing that interest, all the work that you all have done, you know, in preparation. uh, of submitting your application and certainly being agendaized here with the planning commission tonight, uh, very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dr. Lopez. Any additional deliberations from the commission? Um, just real quick, um, I'm reviewing once more the the staff report and hearing that in the the Wilson neighborhood, about twenty-two to twenty-six people attended the meeting and only two had made comments. Um, one was already addressed, um, um, the sister, um, from the location next door and then a business owner in the area that feels that revitalizing downtown will be hindered by this project. Those are things that I I I look at and I see what what would the impacts be? Um, Mr. Rozell brought up, um, you know, that reassurance that annually it's being reviewed. And it is my understanding that the city is, um, looking to bring in a city staff person that will be dedicated to um, working with the dispensaries and ensuring that they're in full compliance. Um, which does add a little bit more, uh, reassurance. I asked the questions in regards and, you know, Commissioner Dr. Lopez, he kind of touched on them in regards to the public library and regards to the navigation center. And I asked those questions in regards to the navigation centers because this is was a a huge project uh, that we, that the planning commission had a hand in that city council, that the community, everyone bought into this project. And it's, you know, it's definitely gonna be a a great use. Um, there was even a lot of concerns in regards to it being located in downtown Oxnard, the business owners having those concerns. Um, more homeless in the area. And I asked the question in regards to what were the rules and regulations because of the fact that on the ground floor is the shelter, but on the upper floors, they're residential housing for homeless transitioning out of living on the streets. And if they come and they purchase from the dispensaries, what happens to their progress that they're making to get off the streets? I see that as a community impact. Um, and I know it's not fair to rest it all on that one location, but at the same time, as already mentioned by Commissioner Dr. Lopez, homelessness is not just unique to Oxnard. It's across the street, it's across the country, it's across the world. Everybody feels that they have an idea on how to combat it. But unfortunately, it's like a whack-a-mole. We address it here, it pops up over here. Um, unfortunately, I didn't even get to ask the questions in regards to the security plan, um, which definitely needs to be addressed because of the fact that the number of homeless is very high in the downtown area. You go to Plaza Park at any time of the day and you can see at minimum um, six to seven of them in the loitering in the park. Again, this morning I walked downtown, um, and I came across in just that area where this proposed location, I came across six homeless individuals just hanging around in the area. I would hope that the security measures are in place in order to be able to address this. That doesn't put your employees in at risk, but also keeps the community safe. You know, speaking to the people that I came across when I was, um, and it was one of the sisters, I'm not sure which one, but one of them stopped me as I was standing in front of the building, looking at it, reading what the description, um, of the project was. They 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 had concerns. And she mentioned, and I'm pretty sure, Mr. Lopez, you 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 heard the same thing, for fifty years, they've been there, serving the community. And they feel that this is an inappropriate usage right next door to a place that they consider to be holy, to be a place of respect. I'm on the fence because I believe you guys have a decent or or a good plan in order to go forward. But the community impact that's there, and I think about the navigation center, although that it's not online, but that those individuals that we are trying to get off the streets are going to be literally across the street from you guys. Um, and it's not like you're gonna say, well, do you live in the navigation center? If so, I can't sell to you. You know, that that's not a requirement for you guys. I'll listen to my fellow commissioners and and I'll render my decision when appropriate. Commissioner Meyer.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. Um, one thing I wanted to confirm, I noticed that you, um, for the applicant, I noticed that you uh, noted a a two and a half percent profit share. Um, so was that, um, intentionally above the one percent requirement from the city? Or am I am I confusing, um, profit sharing with versus community benefit? Can you clarify that for me?
Or you, would you like to chime in on this one?
Um, sure, no problem. So, um, it is different than community benefit. So there's a one percent community benefit that goes to the city and the two and a half percent profit share actually is returned to the employees. So employees that have been with the company for more than one year, um, have the opportunity to receive two point five percent of the profit share. So it's just an extra benefit. Excuse me, that the company gives back to the employees to try to to return some of the funds that if they've earned to you you know, to actual employees who have done the hard work, um, each each and every day to make the business successful. But I would like to just quickly, I can quickly tell you that I'm sorry, I haven't coughed the entire time and then it's my turn to say something and of course I'm coughing, um. The one percent is is in relationship to the financial contributions, but Elevate is not simply going to be giving financial contributions. So also be giving volunteer hours, focusing on local hiring and working on in-kind donations. So there'll be multiple in-kind donation drives that'll be operated throughout the year that can benefit um, all sorts of different organizations, um, including the homeless shelter that will be coming online. Um, and so that is above and beyond the one percent gross that, um, of of actual monetary contributions that are being made. So their community benefits plan does exceed the one and a half, uh, the one percent um, because they have other ways that they'll be giving that that are are beyond simply monetary donations.
Great, great. Thanks for that clarification. It's very helpful. Um, yeah, so from from what I can gather and knowing the the very rigorous application process that the city put all of the applicants through before approving those that they did. Um, I definitely can comfortably support this. Um, I can appreciate, um, people are, people are in different places with regard to their understanding of cannabis and their feelings about it. Um, which can be grounded in personal experience, grounded in rumors. Um, you know, the the consciousness of there's there's still a reefer madness consciousness, you know, whatever was, you know, ninety, hundred years after the the film came out. And, um, so it it takes, it's taking time to work through and and, um, I think it's important that that we do our best to educate ourselves about what, um, what are valid concerns and what are things that, um, that don't, uh, aren't supported by the evidence, um. For example, uh, when we talk about being near the the homeless, uh, center or the, um, the navigation center. Um, I'm imagining that the the navigation center would not allow, but I'm not even sure, perhaps they won't allow, um, alcohol or, um, other, other drugs, which would include cannabis. Um, that may or may not be the case, but, um, it'd be hard to imagine them allowing that and then allowing indoor use. And the only legal use of cannabis in in the city and and in the the state is, uh, indoor use or or within a residence. So, um, I I don't see that as a concern because anywhere else that a person who doesn't have a home would use cannabis, um, in terms of, uh, of smoking it specifically would be, uh, illegal and would be addressed by our, um, by various tools that the city has up up to, including the police. Um, I don't know that there's a connection between, um, access to legal cannabis and homelessness per se, um. But we, the city did a very careful job of identifying, uh, sensitive uses. Um, and we've had the time to see what's happened in other communities, including Port One Eevee. Um, and we haven't seen those concerns. Um, we don't see, uh, loitering or homelessness connections associated with um, with cannabis dispensaries. Um, in fact, their security makes it less likely that there's loitering versus uh, the current state of many of the locations where they they come into, which are often empty. Um, and are then not only eyesores, but then are places where, um, uh, loitering and criminal activity can take place more easily. Uh, they're not well lit and they don't have the security like a cannabis dispensary would have. So I feel like this this, um, applicant has checked off all the boxes, um, done their due diligence and there will always be people who will have concerns. Um, and as long as we're addressing the concerns that are legitimate, I think that's that's everything that we can do. So I I'm comfortable supporting this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Meyer. Commissioner Sanchez.
Thank you, Chair. Um, on this, you know, I've been pretty, uh, supportive on on the, when it has to do with the, uh, um, cannabis and what have you, I think I've tried other than maybe one, I did not support, but most of them, because, uh, you know, it's legal and, uh, you know, it's a part, and that's that's the main thing for me. So, but with with this one, this this would, this, um, um, this one would be almost like, for me, it would be the, um, it would it would be just like the, uh, the rest of them, except there's a faith grave, faith. Um, uh, faith group, uh, nonprofit and a homeless shent, uh, shelter. And for me, I'm not feeling comfortable about that, supporting possibly because of that. So I'm I'm not sure where where I'm gonna land on this, but, uh, uh, to me, it it sort of bothers me. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sanchez. Any additional deliberations? Seeing and hearing none, I'll be looking for a motion on this item. Commissioner Meyer.
Uh, uh, thank you, Chair. I move, uh, that we approve the project as per staff's recommendation.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Nash.
Second.
It's been moved a second to, for the planning commission to find the project, it to be categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines, Section fifteen three oh one, existing facilities and adopt a resolution twenty twenty-two double X per replanning and zoning permit number twenty-one dash five sixteen dash twelve, special use permit, cannabis retail, subject to certain findings and conditions. Is there any deliberation on that motion? Seeing and hearing none. Madam Secretary, if we can have the roll call, please.
Commissioner Meyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Nash?
I.
Commissioner Dr. Lopez?
I.
Commissioner Sanchez?
No.
Chair Chavez?
No.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and proceed to our next item. Item G three. Summarizing it, it's a project name, ninety-nine High Tide, Oxnard Doing Businesses, ninety-nine High Tide, La Serena Commercial Cannabis Business Retail Special Use Permit Planning and Zoning Permit Number twenty-one dash five sixteen dash forty-three Special Use Permit Cannabis Retail, located at one thirty-eight South A Street within the downtown general zone. Tenant improvements, insulation of an interior wall partitioning, plumbing upgrades, upgrades to the existing alarm system, fire alarm system, security upgrades to, uh, installation of a new secure doors and windows and and exterior improvements. Retail operations will be conducted between nine AM to nine PM daily. This is filed by Sam Boyer on behalf of ninety-nine High Tide. Oxnard Doing Businesses, ninety-nine High Tide, La Serena. City staff person is Jose Coyle, Associate Planner. Recommendation is that the planning commission find the project to be categorically exempt from environmental review perform pursuant to sequel guidelines, Section fifteen three oh one, and adopt a resolution approving planning zoning permit number twenty-one dash five sixteen dash forty-three, subject to certain findings and conditions. Our city staff person, do we have any additional information to provide on this item?
Chair Chavez, this is Scott Colbitz, and I would like to, uh, again, remind the planning commission that we did send out two transmittal memos on this item. Um, the first one had eighty-two, uh, uh, members of the public that provided comments, the second one provided forty. In addition to that, um, uh, Jose Coyle just informed me that we also received a letter from the applicant that I'm gonna forward off to the planning commission as well at this moment. Uh, that did not make it into the last transmittal memo. Excuse me. Uh, and it would be staff's quick recommendation that, um, we provide the planning commission uh, a a short recess to go ahead and, um, make sure that they've had an opportunity to review those correspondences. Um, aside from that, I don't have any other additional comments, uh, but I did want to turn it over to Jose to see if there's any other items that he would like to share with the planning commission. And while he's doing that, I will forward the letter off to the planning commissioners. And again, we'll make that available, that letter available to, uh, the public, um, uh, by posting it on our website.
Hello, commissioners. Um, I don't have anything else to add, um, so we'll wait for Scott to go ahead and forward, um, that letter over to your email.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle. Um, commissioners, at this time, we'll go ahead and take a short recess. We'll reconvene at eight thirty. Um, if the email doesn't come in in a timely manner, um, please let us know and then we'll extend the recess if necessary. So we'll go ahead and be in recess. Thank you. And then we'll extend the recess if necessary. So we'll go ahead and be in recess. Thank you. Um, good evening. We're reconvening from our recess. This is the Oxnard Planning Commission regular meeting for Thursday, January twentieth, twenty twenty two. We're currently on item G three, um, High Tide Oxnard doing business as ninety, sorry, ninety nine High Tide. Oxnard doing business as ninety nine High Tide La Serena, um, commercial cannabis business retail, special use permit. Um, we had just risk reviewed um, a transmittal that came in. Last minute from the applicant team um representative. So at this time, we'll go ahead and move to our applicant team. For their presentation and then we'll take um questions from the commission.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Hello, Chair Commissioners. I'm Ivan de la Rosa Green. I'm the CEO of ninety nine High Tide, and tonight I have Sam Boyer, the CEO O, as well as Jesus Torres, the community relations representative. John Booga, who is gonna be our general manager, and Russ Cornwall, our security consultant. Together, we are the ninety nine High Tide Oxnard La Serena Team. We are local Oxnard residents and we are a female-led, ethnically diverse, highly experienced team. Composed of the top professionals in the cannabis industry. Next slide. Our mission, as you can see here, um, aside from this noble mission, we're an award-winning Southern California cannabis retail brand. Whose mission is to uplift the local community that we serve through cannabis education and healing with a focus on women. And the environment. And I got into this industry maybe sixteen years ago. When my mother was diagnosed with breast cancer and unable to find a respectable, knowledgeable. Welcoming dispensary, I set out to create my own. That was sixteen years ago. And today, our vision is to serve our community with the highest quality service products and care in the entire industry. And I always like to mention that with solely the use of cannabis. Sixteen years later, my mother is alive and well and cancer-free, and that's why we do what we do. Sorry, next slide. Um, we are oxide locals with over forty years of combined cannabis experience. We've been recognized as pioneers throughout the cannabis industry and as trail blazing leaders. We are credited with helping to change the image of cannabis through over thirty years of personal activism. And holding the undisputed honor and recognition of creating the very first upscale retail brand in the nation. Which most dispensaries now model themselves after. Next slide. Here are some of our awards and accolades that we're very proud of. Some of the ones that I'm most proud of is High Times Magazine, one hundred most influential people. Forbes Magazine, fifteen powerful women in cannabis, of course, Rolling Stone Magazine. A lot of these publications we all grew up with and um, it's just very nice to be honored by them. Next slide. Currently, our flagship store is in Malibu, California. Where we've been proudly serving the local community since twenty fifteen. And we've received countless media and industry accolades and respect from city officials. As you'll see in the slide, uh, Mayor of Malibu, Mikey Pearson, um, is very supportive of us, as is the former mayor of Malibu. Laura Rosenthal, and we're very grateful for their support throughout the years. We work, we've worked really closely hand in hand with the city and um, and that's something that we will also be doing in Oxnard. Um, ever since we opened, we've actually been serving the Oxnard community before Port Juani opened. And even since uh, the dispensaries in Juani have opened, we still have a very, very large community uh. From Oxnard that still goes to the Malibu store for service or quality or experience or knowledge. So it's gonna be a lot easier for them to come to our store in Oxnard now. Next slide. Our location uh is at one three A Street in the downtown general zone. The this planning commission recommended adding the downtown general zone in the cannabis zoning map on August fifteenth, twenty nineteen. Our location has been approved at every stage of the application process. From our zoning verification letter, our application process through HDL, our meetings with the selection committee. And as a chosen winner to proceed to this SUP process, it meets every requirement in the city's ordinance and state regulations. There's approximately twenty three hundred square feet available for retail operations. And it's more than a thousand feet away from any sensitive use sites. It's a standalone building providing for more safety and privacy, and it's currently bookended by the Precision Auto Shop. Parking lot and the Estetica Beauty Shop. Next slide. Site plan. The site upgrades are gonna consist of interior tenant improvements and exterior tenant improvements. For the exterior of the building, we'll be adding a new locked trash enclosure in the back of the property, as well as a new fence in the back. New features also are gonna include outdoor lighting, uh, fire suppression system, security elements such as a call box at the exterior of the building. We've satisfied all of the downtown design review committee recommendations, uh, including adding sidewalk tree planters. Next slide. Uh, let's see here. We're gonna be making exterior facade enhancements with natural wood and steel materials. And also, we're adding a really beautiful, pleasing planter design on each side, which is also gonna act as a security baller. So that's something extra that we've added. Uh, next slide. Here you'll see our beautiful interior um, and natural use of elements. Next slide. The sales floor here, as you can see, will include a secure and also aesthetically pleasing environment. Consisting of sustainably sourced wood, custom glass counters with natural materials. Um, also throughout, we have an ocean-inspired theme where we'll be using organic decor such as sustainably sourced seashell, chandeliers. And hemp materials where possible. Next slide. Our site management plan for the premises includes daily inspection of the outer area of the building for trash graffiti and any other unsightly issues. Uh, any dump trash or litter will be collected immediately and any graffiti will be immediately painted over. We have standard SOPs for our odor and noise mitigation and sidewalk management to ensure that our customers. Are never nuisance to our neighbors and our goal, of course, is always to be very good and responsive neighbors. We've had a one hundred percent compliance record in all the years that we've been in business. Next slide. Our parking plan, we've put together a very robust and thoughtful parking plan. We thoroughly reviewed the city's mobility and parking management plan, which states that there are over twelve hundred and ninety seven vacant stalls. Uh, of on-street parking during peak hours in downtown, but that's not enough for us. We wanted to go above and beyond, and the city also suggests we can use tools like in lieu parking fees, which we're participating in. And it also encourages um, businesses to get their employees into off-street parking and offer incentives to employees to use alternative. Alternative forms of transportation. So we are doing all of those, adopting all of those recommendations. We've secured a lease across the street um, for our employee parkings directly across the street. And um, that's gonna free up parking, of course. We're paying the city's in lieu parking fee. To support local traffic and transit solutions and we're also gonna be offering a parking cash out incentive to our employees. Um, to use alternative methods such as carpooling, walking, bicycling, which also goes with our environmental ethos. Next slide. We've always pride prided ourselves on building a diverse and inclusive and a culturally competent workforce. We offer all our employees a comprehensive compensation package. All our staff is gonna be offered a living wage as a starting salary with full benefits. Four oh one K retirement plan. We'll also be offering ten hours of paid volunteerism for our neighborhood. That we're gonna apply to the local community, such as directly across the street to the Lopez Community Garden. Um, we'll also adhere to the city's seventy five percent local hire. And um, we've already signed our LPA with UFCW seven seventy, so we've done that already. Very proud of that. Uh, next slide. This is our security plan. Um, I can speak to it. Um, if need be, we have Russ Cornwall, but ninety nine High Tide is using Cornwall Security. An experienced private security company with uh clients, cannabis clients already in Port Juani, so they're very experienced. Our security philosophy revolves around SEPTED. And with that, you know, I'm sure you all know what it is, but it states that through design and maintenance of the building, it has an impact on safety and security. And we'll have, you know, multiple layers of security, including extra cameras and monitoring the surrounding area. And just making our neighbors feel extra safe and comfortable. And of course, we've worked extensively with Scott Swenson, and we've integrated all of his uh recommendations into our security plan. And uh, now I wanna hand it off to Jesus Torres, our community relations rep- representative.
Thanks, Ivan. Hi, I'm Jesus Torres, and I'm responsible for community outreach and engagement. I'm a native of Oxnard. I grew up in the Colonia Village, and my family has a long history in the city. Um, being good neighbors and being open and transparent is important to us. Ninety nine High Tide is a local equity applicant, and this is uh, this is our community. We are personally invested. Um, although this is a commercial district, there are homes further out about five hundred feet away. So we canvassed the immediate neighborhood and received signatures from almost every resident on West First Street that is adjacent to A Street there. Uh, we received great support for improvements to come, including security, uh landscaping and making the area safer. Uh, we also received support and excitement for safe and convenient access. In total, we canvassed approximately fifty homes and spoke to twenty one people and received fourteen signatures. We also spoke to neighboring businesses, fourteen to be specific, and I can name them just really quick. Uh, we talked to Estetica located at one thirty four South A Street, Dr. Henry Perez located at one thirty two A Street. The Set Nails located at one twenty two South A Street, Chewing Suns located at one eighteen South A Street, Ultra Tax located at one ten South A Street. Beauty Bus located at one oh one South A Street, JC Clothing located at one twenty five North A Street. Massage Sweet Dreams located at one thirty five North A Street, Flowers by Paul Ann located at one forty North A Street. Andra, Angela Threading and Facial located at one thirty North A Street, and Core Athletics located at one twenty eight North A A Street. And so overall, um, we, they were happy that uh, this was gonna attract more foot traffic. And just stated as just a positive improvement that everyone is looking forward to, as well as the safety and security features of this project. We were asked about what impact this would have on parking, and we also received some parking uh feedback with on the workshop. So that's why we said, you know, we need a plan for parking. What are we gonna do about parking? Uh, we live in Oxnard, we know Oxnard parking. And so we wanted to make sure that we had a plan, um, that Ivan just uh, uh. that Yvonne just talked about. We also did an e-blast to one hundred and fifty-six local residents for today's hearing, and we also sent that meeting notifications for the community workshop. Lastly, we met with Gary Blum, Chair of the Neighborhood Council. Next slide. So that was just the slide that I was, I, I spoke on. And there's a copy of our signatures that we received when we canvassed the neighborhood. I'll just kind of freeze just for a quick second so you can review it. Okay, next slide. Community benefits. The ninety-nine High Tide brand is rooted in community work. Ninety-nine High Tide will be contributing in additional one percent of profit beyond what's required for our own community fund to support local grassroots organizations and downtown improvement initiatives. We are excited about supporting a pre-apprenticeship program between PAL, City Core, and the Labor's Local five eighty-five to provide Oxnard underserved young adults a pathway to a career in the trades. It's called a youth apprenticeship readiness accelerator. Employee volunteers and projects will include maintenance of the Lopez Community Garden across the street and beach and neighborhood cleanups. Ninety-nine High Tide also brings a decade-long track record of working with veterans through their partnership with Weed for Warriors and their Veterans Walk and Talk Program, which Yvonne and Sam have supported since its inception. And finally, and we're excited about this, our GM, John Burga, also brings an impressive track record of community engagement and has time as general manager at Willhouse Port Wainimi. So he will bring that to ninety-nine High Tide and all the great relationships that he's developed over the years in Port Wainimi and Oxnard. And I'll hand it off back to Yvonne.
Thank you, Jesus. Downtown is where it's
Next slide.
Sorry. Downtown is where it's at for us. At ninety-nine High Tide in La Serena, it's where we want to be. We looked at many locations and for us, we, we love downtown and we want to be a part of it. We are a part of it. And we're committed to the city's vision of new urbanism to create a walkable, livable environment with thriving commerce during the day and safe opportunities at night. We're excited and look forward to working with the city on a gateway sign on Palm, on Palm Drive that entices people into downtown Oxnard and provides them with a sense of wonder and excitement for what's in store as they drive in. And next slide. We are very proud local equity applicants with over forty years of combined operational cannabis retail experience. We've satisfied all the requirements set forth to obtain a special use permit. As a minority-owned and female-run business and as a leader in the cannabis industry, my partners and me at ninety-nine High Tide, we look forward to serving the downtown Oxnard community with all of our commitment and passion for this plant and for our city. Thank you so much.
Thank you for the presentation. Commissioners, if there's no objection, what I would like to do, because we do have a number of public comments, take those public comments and then we'll have commissioners do questions and, and any deliberations that they have. So is there any objections of taking public comment first? I see in here none, so let's go ahead and take public comment first on this item. So I'll open the public hearing for this. First person I have on my list is Myra Delgado.
Chair Myra Delgado is not on the call.
Okay, so we'll look to Anthony Morales.
Yes, good evening, Chair, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. My name is Anthony Morales, Business Manager, Labor's Local five eighty-five and fifty-three year resident, City of Oxnard. I am speaking on behalf of the Youth Apprenticeship Ready, Readiness Accelerator Program that we're developing and our partnership with ninety-nine High Tide. We have formed a partnership between the Labor's, Local five eighty-five, Police Activities League, State PAL, City Core, and other trades and local organizations and businesses to create a program to foster career for pathways for underserved young adults in Oxnard. These are going to be pathways into the trades, green jobs, potentially future offshore wind generation and jobs and distribution and utilities. Ninety-nine High Tide is one of our funding partners and is investing in improving the lives of local young adults that need economic empowerment. I know that they have also partnered with other local grassroots organizations because they are local and understand the needs of the community and the revitalization of the, the focus on downtown. I urge you to approve ninety-nine High Tide's retail permit so that we can grow our partnership here in the community. Thank you for your time.
Give Ms. Morales for your comments. The next person is Liz Dean.
Hello.
Yes, you have three minutes.
Hi, thank you. Thank you so much for taking the time to listen to me. I I discovered ninety-nine High Tide in two thousand and seventeen after my mother had a debilitating stroke. She was, she felt like she had morning sickness every day for six years and I finally was able to get her to agree to try cannabis, which I'd heard so much about. I looked for a local dispensary and I went to ninety-nine High Tide where I was greeted by the most incredible knowledgeable staff. It was a space that I was, I started frequenting to get medicine for my mother a couple of times a week just to be able to talk to them about her, her specific, her specific issues and she, she cried and my mother and said that it was the first time in six years that she did not feel nauseous. So that was how I discovered ninety-nine High Tide, Malibu, and I became friends with, with Sam and Yvonne through, just, just through my gratitude and appreciation for what they had done for my family. In the, in the years since, we've had an incredible time serving our community in Malibu and and throughout thousands of the neighboring communities. We've, we hosted the first ever Chamber of, Chamber of Commerce event at a cannabis dispensary in the country in June of two thousand and eighteen, which was an absolute blast. We, we also had a toy drive back in two thousand and eighteen after Woolsey. And we, we had a gift dropping station for patients and just anybody who had been affected by the fires to come in and pick up books and toys and wrap them with Hanukkah paper and Christmas paper for the kids in their, in their life that they needed to get gifts to. And we, we've done a lot
Thirty seconds left.
The, the homeless community in, in Malibu, the there are so many people that Sam and Yvonne help and, and people are unaware of what they've, what they've done for. They don't talk about it. They don't brag about it. They don't put anything on social media. They just do what is right for this planet and for humanity each and every single time. And Oxnard is very lucky
Thank you, Ms. Dean.
My pleasure. Thank you.
I appreciate those comments. Our next speaker is Mikey Pearson.
Hi, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes, you have three minutes.
Okay, great. My name's Mikey Pearson and I'm a resident of Malibu. And as full disclosure, I was one of the planning commissioners that approved ninety-nine High Tide as the first dispensary in Malibu. And as Yvonne said in her presentation to my surprise, I am actually the recent past mayor of Malibu and currently on the Malibu City Council. And as a quick side note, I'm impressed with your commission, to be honest. And honestly, I find you far more functional and respectful than our own planning commission. But that's a side note. I, I can't speak to the application itself and I don't know your codes, but I am here to speak to the character of Yvonne and Sam and ninety-nine High Tide. Just like your city, there were some residents that opposed the approval of ninety-nine High Tide. But honestly, there has been no issues and they run a beautiful and environmentally focused store with truly amazing and notable, I mean, I mean knowledgeable employees, just like Liz said. And unasked by the city, they also do contribute a lot to the community. I, I think it was already said, but I know they organized beach cleanups for many years. They've supported veterans. And, and importantly to me, they supported a residents in need after the Woolsey fire, which, by the way, also burned down the home they lived in and was actually pretty traumatic. And I, and Liz mentioned it, but they also created the first ever Chamber of Commerce event at dispensary and, and to see it was amazing, to see entire business community show up. And honestly, we were all really impressed. It was, it was a great event and had to see it to really see the, understand it, but it was impressive. And what I want to say lastly, and I think Liz touched on it as well, is that they've always had a focus on helping people that are dealing with, with, with pain and anxiety, including end-of-life medical situations. And it's really notable to me that a number of the more conservative, I would say, non-cannabis leaning residents in the community have told me on the side, what a difference ninety-nine High Tide made in helping people with these kinds of issue. And I really find that powerful. I thank you for your time, Commissioners and Chair Chavez. I hope you feel better quickly. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pearson, for your comments and anytime you want to share our meetings with your planning commission to learn something, please feel free to do so. And thank you for your comments for my help. Our next speaker is Rolando Lugo.
Rolando Lugo is not on the call.
Thank you. Our next person is Robert Mulder. Mulder.
Good morning, or good evening, everybody. My name is Robert Mulder. I am a local merchant in downtown Oxnard and I'm actually the owner of not only one thirty-eight South A Street, but also three oh one South A Street, five sixty South A Street, two twenty-nine South Oxnard Boulevard and seven oh five North Oxnard Boulevard. So as you can see, I'm fully vested in the interest and as an investor and merchant in downtown Oxnard and truly feel that the cannabis stores that are applying for locations, not only on A Street, or predominantly on A Street, as that there seems to be at least three of them, I think are all going to contribute to a betterment of downtown Oxnard. The merchants are going to be bringing a lot more foot traffic, a lot more business, obviously a lot more revenue to downtown. When this came to my attention that people were looking to open up cannabis shops in downtown Oxnard, at first I was a little bit reserved as that I am a former police officer with the city of Glendale, so I put a little stink eye on this at first, like, okay, what's this all about? After investigating, I decided that I needed to go visit as many cannabis shops as possible. So I visited High Tide, I visited the Artistry, I visited Wagon Wheel, Safe Harbor, Elevate. I went to all of these shops to go see what me as a landlord would be doing if I was going to rent to somebody like this. Because of course, my first impression was this was going to be some sort of seedy, you know, weed shop. After visiting these, all of these stores, and I think I've done about fifteen of them now, I have to say I was blown away by the upscale. I felt like I was going into a Beverly Hills store ready to buy a Gucci bag or a Rolex as opposed to some marijuana. So that being said, and being a former police officer, never even trying marijuana or wanting to even be involved with marijuana, I said, okay, I got to learn more about this. And I started learning that, hey, this stuff can help you sleep and this stuff can help relieve pain. And so, hey, mom, I got something for you. You got to try this. I know you're nuts. No, I'm not going to do that. Now finally, I'm actually up in San Luis Obispo now delivering some gummy bears to my mom who hurt her back, actually broke one of her lower vertebrae to help with the pain and help her sleep. And they're all in the living room waiting for me to get back to them, but I had to come in and give my two cents in support, not only for
Thirty seconds left.
ninety-nine, but for all of the shops that are trying to open up in downtown Oxnard, because this is going to drive business. This is going to hopefully help with some of the homeless issues that are in downtown. And quite honestly, I think this is going to be amazing for downtown Oxnard. This is what the city's wanted all this time. They, they've been looking for something to bring people downtown and now we've got it. Gentlemen, ladies, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Rolando, for your comments. Our next speaker is Sergio Berga. And I apologize if I mispronounced the last name.
I have Sergio on, but I, he needs to unmute himself.
Okay, we'll give it another thirty seconds and if he doesn't unmute, we'll move on, but we'll come back to him. House Secretary, let's go ahead and move on to the next one. John.
Okay, I'm getting him now.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Chavez and Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes, you have three minutes.
Excellent, thank you. My name is John Berga and I am a local Oxnard resident with six years of experience in the cannabis industry, starting from an entry level position in two thousand and sixteen. But by two thousand and twenty, I've helped open and manage and operated three different dispensaries, all which have won awards for being the best. Most recently in two thousand and twenty-one, I was able to become a shareholder in a dispensary storefront, a cannabis brand, as well as a delivery service. I have been brought on to the team as a GM by Yvonne and Sam to run daily operations at ninety-nine High Tide. And I look forward to my new adventure and to, very excited to be serving the community of Oxnard. Thank you for the opportunity tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Berga, for your comments. Our next person is Lilian Kuba.
Lilian is not on the call.
Thank you. Next person is Eric Thesis. Thesis.
Okay, I'm getting him now.
Thank you. And I apologize if I mispronounced the last name.
No worries. Thank you for listening, Chair Chavez, and the rest of the commission team. How are you? I'm in the cannabis business in California and I have been for about seven years. I've worked for various brands and had the pleasure of working with ninety-nine High Tides in Malibu. Obviously, you've seen and heard from everybody here how professional they run their business, how clean and safe and welcoming it's been from day one. I wish all the dispensaries were run as professional as they were. Apart from the, the business side of things, they are the first dispensary that my team and I have been able to work with outside of the dispensary, not doing business, doing community outreach. She organized, or their team organized, the very first beach cleanup that my brand was able to participate in, or any brand that I know of was able to participate in as we walked the beach in Malibu in January of two thousand and fifteen. I believe they paved the way for those type of events where they're cleaning up the communities. And having the opportunity to actually come out and, and support anybody that has done that, I jumped at the chance. So I urge the planning commission for Oxnard to give ninety-nine High Tides their retail permit in in Oxnard. And I can't wait to see the store and partner with them and bring my team in. in Oxnard. And I can't wait to see the store and partner with them and bring my team in to, to help clean up Oxnard wherever they need help. So thank you for taking the time to listen.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Zaher Lahai. I know I messed that last name up.
Thank you, guys. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, you have three minutes.
My name is Zuhul Algi. I am one of the co-founders of Wheelhouse Dispensary. You would think me being a competitor, I would not be speaking on behalf of 99 High Tide. But we actually support 10 other cannabis businesses in the local Port Juani and Ventura County. We also have welcomed John Berga. He has been our general manager, not only at the Oxnard, Port Juani location, including our LA location. And we welcome and support his new transition into this new dispensary. Being a local Oxnard resident, this was very important to him. And to go to another company that had the same visions and values as we do, as a giving back and being a contributor to the community. So I just wanted to say as a, as a different dispensary owner that supports cannabis business, we are here to support 99 High Tide. We welcome them to the neighborhood. And let's go be the best dispensaries out there and show the world that cannabis stigma is incorrect. And we are there to change that. And we are here to help the community, the neighbors, and drive profits for the city and the community and do what we do best. So thank you for hearing me and I'm in full support of 99 High Tide, John Berga and the team, Yvonne, Sam and Jesus for their retail location. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Saher. We'll move on to our next speaker, Kim Freeman.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Hi, my name is Kim Freeman. I've known Sam and Yvonne for quite a long time. I, I know that Yvonne was in search of a cure for her mom to treat her cancer many, many years ago. And I think that's why Yvonne pursued opening 99 High Tide. I know it was a big challenge for her to do that in Malibu. I'm a little emotional because I went through the same thing with my mom. My mom was diagnosed with stage four cancer and I reached out to Yvonne for help when I received that diagnosis and she was so professional and so helpful. And we were able to keep my mom alive for seven years with stage four cancer with Yvonne and 99 High Tide as part of the team. Unfortunately, I just lost my mom, not because of cancer. She did not die of cancer or something else. It just happened recently, so I'm very sorry that I'm very emotional. But I wanted to be on the call to help Sam and Yvonne. They've been so supportive, not only with my mom, with my husband who has had sleeping issues. He goes there and Sam and Yvonne's team are really knowledgeable and they've been able to help my husband. I also had a bad knee injury and Sam and Yvonne's team were able to help me with some creams that helped my knee recover. I did not have to have knee surgery thankfully because I was able to go with the natural route and I really appreciate that. They're so professional and so knowledgeable. And just, it's a safe place to go. I live in Malibu, so I go to their store in Malibu when I need to. And also I've been to beach cleanup and I really appreciate the fact that they are so generous with our community to give back and help clean up our city and clean up our beaches. And their parents as well, they have a young daughter. And they're looking out for the best interest of our kids in Malibu and I'm sure that they will do the same in, in the city of Oxnard as well. And I thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman, for your comments and I'm sure the commission will agree with me. We send you our condolences to your family for your recent loss. Our next speaker is and now I'm going to butcher this one, Tamir Elshakus.
Hello, yes. Good evening, esteemed commissioners. My name is Tamir Elshakus. I have been a best practices consultant in the cannabis industry for over 15 years. Yvonne Delarosa Green and Sam Boyer of 99 High Tide La Serena are truly pioneers in the field. I've known them both since they opened their first dispensary in Venice Beach in 2008. They launched the first upscale dispensary on Abbott Kinney. They are kind and compassionate and their evolving innovations have established them as leaders in the compliant cannabis. They are known for having the most informed and informative cannabis consultants. They lead the way in the community involvement and outreach. I wholeheartedly give my support and recommend approval of the 99 High Tide La Serena. Oxnard will gain an invaluable asset and a model for others to follow. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you for your comments and I apologize for the butchering of your name. Our next speaker is Jennifer. That's all it just says.
Jennifer's not on the call.
Okay, Natalie Dragato.
Yes, I'm here.
Yes, you have three minutes.
Hi, good evening. My name is Natalie Dragato and I'm here with my daughter Gianna. Gianna was born with a rare metabolic disorder and had suffered from a rare seizure disorder. She was having thousands of seizures a day and constantly in and out of the hospital. Her last EEG, the month before we started cannabis was in 2014 and she was having a seizure every three seconds, three seconds. I know there is some negative views on cannabis and the lack of the faith of how it heals. And this is why I think it's important to share my story with you. Even though every pharmaceutical medication on the market had failed to help Gianna, when cannabis first came out, I didn't believe it would work and I thought it was a gimmick that can, and just to get cannabis legalized. My husband's a firefighter and he's never tried marijuana. And both of us were against cannabis to be legalized. It wasn't until I started seeing children get better and become seizure free on cannabis that my eyes were opened. We ran out of options for Gianna. So I started researching on my own and realized that I was really uneducated and decided to give it a try in 2014. This was seven years ago. One of the other reasons why I was hesitant was because I didn't know the long-term safety effect of it. And Gianna is a good testament because it's been seven years and she's made milestones that we never thought would be possible with no side effects. We went to cannabis doctor and they gave us a, she recommended a concentrated cannabis oil called a tincture. So I always thought that it was like smoking flower and stuff like that, but we give it through her G2 four times a day. I heard about 90, 99 High Tide and Yvonne and Sam because they were helping so many other families and they were using, in their store, they had the oils that were recommended by my doctor. And, and Gianna's been seizure free now for three years. All of Gianna's doctors are impressed and amazed by her progress and her neurologist specialist at UCLA 100% supports our and encourages us to continue with these oils. It's important, I think it's important to support small businesses, especially one like 99 High Tide. Yvonne goes out of her way to make sure that their dispensary carries these high quality tinctures that is needed for my daughter and other patients.
Thirty seconds left.
It's not just for patients like Gianna for epilepsy. They help other patients. And it's about the products that they carry and, and how they treat their patients and communities and the support that they give. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for sharing your story and continued efforts for your daughter on her improvement of her health. Our next speaker is Andrew Salinas.
I saw him earlier, but I can't find him now. Let me look.
We'll go ahead and move to our next speaker. Kalani. I'm not even going to try to butcher that last name. I apologize, but Kalani is the first name.
That's okay. It's Kalani Yanagahara. Thank you, Honorable Commissioner, our honorable chair and commissioners for your time. I don't think that I will say anything that hasn't been said previously throughout this public hearing. I'll just echo all the positive attributes of character of both Sam and Yvonne as business owners and dispensary operators. And just let you guys know that I'm in strong support of their A Street location and look forward to catching them in and around Oxnard as a local. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for those comments. I'm going to go through the list one more time and then look. And then we'll open it up for any additional speakers. Myra Dagato.
No, she's not here.
Okay, Rolando Lugo.
Yes, he's here.
Okay.
Hello.
Yes, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Hello, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Please vote to approve 99 High Tide's application for cannabis retail permit. This woman owned dispensary, which is a well-known and recognized brand in the industry, will help revitalize downtown and improve safety and security in the area. 99 High Tide will be a great addition to the A Street corridor where a jolt of economic activity is sorely needed. The best part of approving 99 High Tide is supporting an owner who is an Oxnard resident and a local equity applicant. Vote yes on 99 High Tide, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lugo, for your comments. Next person is Sergio Berga.
Sergio needs to unmute himself.
All right, we'll just move on to the next one. If he comes back, he can just use the raise hand feature in the app. Lilian Kuba.
No, she's still not on the call.
Thank you. Jennifer.
Yes, let me get her.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Wow, inspiring. Everything I've heard tonight. My name is Jennifer Straighton and I'm here to support 99 High Tide. I am also a parent of a child with special needs and epilepsy. When my son was 24 hours old, we discovered he was suffering from massive seizures and later diagnosed with two rare seizure disorders. The type of epilepsy he has, has unfortunately no hopeful prognosis and pharmaceutically, pharmaceuticals rarely make a dent in seizure control. With the doctors out of options, one doctor quietly recommended we try cannabis. And my son was only one. I had no idea where to start or to where, to acquire these recommended cannabis oils. You have to remember, this was almost a decade before the Dr. Sanjay Gupta from CNN reported on that famous Charlotte's Web. Luckily, we found Yvonne Delarosa Green and 99 High Tide, who had also been recommending cannabis for my son's seizures. And she helped guide us the whole way. Thanks to her, my son was the first child in California to obtain a legal medical marijuana card when he was one year old. Thanks to her science-based knowledge, I was able to acquire safe and healthy cannabis oil medicine for my son in a time when it was virtually impossible. Thanks to the care and above and beyond compassion from Yvonne and Sam of 99 High Tide, cannabis has been his saving grace. Levi's seizures went from hundreds a day to only a few with cannabis. You've, you've heard from everybody else that time and time again, these guys have proven to be true pioneers. They created this incredible dispensary in Venice and in Malibu, world renowned. They're the first to be entirely vegan and organic. They offer a safe and professional place for someone like me to get my son's medicine. But most importantly, her team truly know the science behind cannabis. And they care deeply about the health and safety of their patients. Their track record proves they believe in their community and give back to the community in so many ways, as you've heard, beach cleanup, helping, supporting cancer and epilepsy foundations. In fact, they even sponsored, I'm getting emotional, my son's medicine and many other families with loved ones and children struggling with life-threatening illnesses such as terminal cancer and epilepsy. This is true to their nature. They are a business, but they truly care about the community first. Oxnard needs a dispensary they can be proud of and that will be 99 High Tide, I guarantee it. And for anyone with hesitation about cannabis plant medicine, please take the time to do your research. There's so much information out there.
Thirty seconds left.
Science and studies show this medicine saves lives. And I know that Oxnard would be, would be beyond grateful and blessed having 99 High Tide in their community. Thank you so much, Commissioners, for taking the time to listen.
Thank you very much for sharing and as a father, I, these, these testimonies are very hard. Because the one thing that we want as parents is to ensure that our children are safe. And if we don't know how to help them, it's so, it's a very challenging thing. So thank you for for sharing those. At this time, we'll follow AB3621 and allow any additional members of the public that wish to participate in tonight's meeting. This is for item G399 High Tide, Oxnard Doom Business says 99 High Tide La Serena. Partying is only from my number 21-516-43. You can participate if you're currently on the call and have not already spoken. You may use the raise hand feature to be recognized. If you wishing to participate, please view the bottom of your screen for the number, meeting ID, as well as the passcode. Thank you. Mr. Roselle, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I, I do see somebody raised their hand. Now, I saw at a city council meeting that they ended up stopping the three minutes, took the public comment and then restarted the three minutes. What is our procedure in that event? Or should we just wait the remaining time?
There is no issue with allowing the person to speak now. I mean, for fairness purposes, everyone should be given three minutes, but it is not required that you restart the three minutes or, you know, right now, for example, we're down to 50 seconds. You don't, you just have to ensure that you give that notice and then people have the opportunity to, to sign in during that timeframe.
Okay, thank you for that. So we're down to less than 40 seconds. And then we'll go to the phone number ending in 4143. Okay, that was our three minutes. Madam Secretary, we can go ahead and bring the phone number ending in 4143.
Good evening, Chair Chavez and distinguished Commissioners. My name is Abel Ramirez Magaña. I am about 20 years, probably longer than that. about 20 years, probably longer than that, homeowner in the Wilson District neighborhood, which is adjacent to runs along this whole A Street corridor that I guess we're characterizing as the Green Mile or so. But I'm also, my day job is as the Director for the Downtown Improvement District, which covers just up to this area at Second Street on the on the northern border and all the way down to 9th over by Heritage Square. So, and between C Street and the Boulevard and the media districts. And so, I've been working at that position. Actually, I've been privileged to be there for the last 11 years, actually. And we've been talking about revitalization even way longer than that of the downtown. And I can tell you that, uh, you know, that this particular action that the city took a couple of years ago to, you know, bring in the cannabis dispensaries, allow them. Uh, we were all excited that, you know, that that was a potential for the downtown. I mean, I think a lot of my members had communicated that 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 would bring, especially on the property owner's side too, you know, would have represented, you know, an opportunity to bring in retail, where retail is very tough, as you know, these days. It's it's undergoing a great changes and evolution. So, you know, everything that they're bringing, you know, that's been discussed here earlier. I don't need to go over that again. You know, the security, the lighting, the benefits of the renovation of outdated storefronts and all of that and the interiors and things too. All of that, we all know. But I think what I had wanted to comment on earlier, but and then all of them, just getting over my own health issues too, terrible bout with COVID, but I, yeah, I'll use my breath here just to say that I was really impressed with the people. Uh, because Yvonne and Sam had come to and visited my office almost two years ago, starting this process. And I heard the the origin story, if you will, from Yvonne. And 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 she got emotional then too and and just it it struck a chord with me too, because I'm an emotional guy too. And I related to that and I related to her passion for the downtown. And I can see and tell you that the passion comes through in every aspect of what they're doing with their business, what they've accomplished, what she's accomplished as a business owner. I would love to have her, you know, on a committee, you know, maybe to share some of that knowledge with our with our other merchants, you know, how they can merchandise their stores and make them look really more inviting and I think too. And, um, you know, lastly, again, hats off to Robert Mulder too, because I know him as a stand-up guy, property owner, investor in the downtown, betting on the future in downtown. And he's absolutely right. I support all of these applicants because they will collectively help raise the level, the sea level in the downtown. And we finally will be revitalized. Drive around downtown, see all the signs from the planning commission. You guys know. You're just gonna be busy reviewing all the projects. Thank you very much and have a good evening.
Thank you and speedy recovery to you, sir. Okay, Madam Secretary, did we get any additional after that?
Yeah, we have another caller ending in 5337. But the hand's not up, so I'll just call him anyway.
Let's go ahead and and see if they wanted to speak on this item.
Okay.
Caller ending in 5337. Yes, did you want to speak on this item, G3?
Actually, yes, if you guys don't mind, just a quick minute.
Yes, you have actually three minutes, so please begin.
Okay, awesome. I'm not sure if you guys received my email, but I just, I I like to, you know, have my voice heard. My name is Chris Hernandez. I'm the Vice Chair of the Five Points Neighborhood Council. And today, I'm calling to support 99 High Tide's application for the cannabis use permit in downtown. This shop, obviously, as you've all heard, it's locally owned by an Oxnard resident and Latina, who has broken many barriers in the cannabis industry. Also, they did a lot of great outreach, including doing outreach to to my community in the Five Points area. Community engagement and a long-term commitment to improving our city and residents is something that all businesses should aspire to do, just like 99 High Tide. 99 High Tide has has committed, as you guys have heard earlier, to donating to the Youth Apprenticeship Readiness Accelerator Program, in which I will be an instructor in. So, this program will help develop our youth and local trades, as well as stimulate our local economy. There are multiple applicants on A Street. So, I urge you definitely to support the one that is locally owned and operated. And just a quick shout out to John Burger. I've done a lot of work with them and Wheelhouse in the past. So, they definitely have all the right people in place to have this dispensary just do many great things for our community in our downtown area. So, thank you guys so much for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez, for your comments. Madam Secretary, I see Myra Delgado. I do see her now. If we want to bring her in.
Okay. Myra needs to unmute herself.
Hello, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, you have three minutes.
Great. Well, thank you so much, Mr. Chair and Planning Commissioners. My name is Myra Delgado, and I am an Oxnard resident in full support of this Latina-owned, majority-owner local equity applicant. Um, I think after tonight, we know that without question, Yvonne and her team have a stellar track record. Um, and it makes me feel safe that businesses such as hers, you know, with education and, you know, just community reinvestment at the forefront are opening up in our neighborhood. And from the outpouring local support, I think this is an asset to our community. I'm also representing Pass It Forward. Um, and we're a local nonprofit here in the area. And we're working with, you know, the young adults to upscale them in the emerging hemp building industry. And so, as all of this is developing, you know, it's pretty exciting to know that 99 High Tide is supporting these types of programs. You know, these are youth apprenticeship programs that affect the community. Um, I've been a longtime cannabis social equity advocate. And we have been more bold, we need more bold Latina leaders like Yvonne in the cannabis industry. And, you know, she has a lot of accolades and feel very comfortable in having her in our neighborhood. And so, I'd just like to just strongly urge you tonight to just vote to approve this Latina local equity applicant. And thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Alright, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing for this item. Commissioners, this is the opportunity for any questions or comments that you may have. Commissioner Meyer?
Of course. Thank you, Chair Chavez. I guess, so if we're mixing in the the commentary with the questions, that that is what we're doing? Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'd like to say that I'm definitely pleased to see a minority social equity local resident woman applicant coming through and especially one that clearly has extensive experience in the industry and success. I I saw the the tons of emails and most of them were were copycat quick. I didn't have any connection. There was no information as to whether they're people living in Oxnard. Or how they were related. So, it didn't really hold much water as far as that went. But the individual ones that had experience with this applicant's work in in cannabis in in Malibu, which while a different community, is also a fairly nearby coastal community. That definitely spoke more and a lot of people who've taken the time to speak at our meeting and talk about very personal experience with the applicant definitely is very impressive. I mean, the bottom line, of course, is that you you met the requirements of our application. And and you've you've carefully designed your plans and followed the recommendations of of downtown experts of our police. So, all those things are very important. But I think it is important especially to have local residents who are have a stake in in the work and who know the community. I can see that you made efforts to outreach to the businesses, the organizations, and the residents nearby, which is definitely important. So, uh, so it's impressive to see. I I see the the detailed thinking in terms of the in-lug parking fees and then rewarding employees that don't need the parking. That cash-out plan is something that I hadn't seen before. So, all of that, the the LPA with UFCW and and all the intentionality that you put into place with this and and putting to to bear all of the experience you have in the industry. I think it definitely benefits our city. I think you stand out in in many of those ways as an applicant from many of our other excellent applicants that have succeeded as to have their applications approved also. And so, I am very comfortable to move forward in support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Meyer. Any additional questions or comments from the Commission? Commissioner Nash?
Thank you, Chair Chavez, and hang in there. So, I appreciate what Commissioner Meyer said. Sometimes we tend to gloss over the therapeutic aspects of cannabis and just focus on cannabis as an intoxicant, because that's where our concern over the over, you know, children's, children, children being exposed to the whole cannabis industry comes from. So, when we hear, you know, firsthand accounts of how people have benefited from using cannabis to help their loved ones deal with with health problems, it's it's very powerful. When I read those emails from the, from the place of worship, you know, I agree that they were all, you know, pretty much cut and paste. And it would have been more powerful if the if the people had given us their personal stories about, you know, having had negative impacts from from the from the cannabis industry, if you will. So, they don't carry as much weight as 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 the personal stories that that we just heard do. So, I thought the presentation was fantastic. You know, they used all of the all of the proper buzzwords to, uh, you know, to excite me. I was I was surprised to hear to hear new urbanism thrown in there. It's 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 almost funny in a way to to include it in a application for a dispensary SUP, but it was in there and I do tend to agree with it. I do think it will help revitalize the downtown because you know, as as Mr. Magaña said, I mean, retail is is a very tough business. And any anything that we can do to get retail generators downtown, that 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 benefits the whole, that benefits the whole commercial downtown area. It brings in people and it certainly brings in money. So, I'm prepared to support this and I thank the Chairman for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Commissioner Nash. Commissioner Dr. Lopez?
I certainly echo what my fellow Commissioners Nash and Meyer have said. I think that if I was in my day job and wearing my education hat, I would say, you know, someone did their homework, you know. And by that, you know, I, there's so much to speak to. I think that, you know, we certainly have seen, you know, the the spectrum of of applicants, of of business proposals. But yet, there's something that distinguishes our local social equity applicants from those who perhaps don't have stronger roots or familiarity with the community that they're hoping to 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 grow their own business in. And so, you know, there are certainly many aspects of the applicant, the and the speakers tonight that stood out to me. Certainly, the compassionate, compassionate aspect of of the cannabis industry, you know, for more medicinal than than recreation. And, you know, certainly did appreciate all those callers who took time out of their evening on a random Thursday evening to join us, to speak to their experiences, you know. And so, thank you all for doing that. In terms of the applicant and the presentation, I think that for me, some of the points that stood out was certainly your commitment to the highest quality of service and care. I appreciated seeing the award-winning accommodations that you all and awards that you all have received. You know, I think that you all were on board to hear some of the previous comments of the last applicant, which I'll speak to in a second, but still on the positives. The SEP10, I don't think a lot of folks who don't do their homework know what that stands for, the Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. And, uh, you know, the relationships that you all have established with, you know, a new innovative program for our youth with PAL and and the leading labor organization with apprenticeships. And then on top of all of that, still the extra 1% that you all are committing to the community in terms of the community benefit. You know, and and that just further, for me, distinguishes you all as an applicant. I don't know where you all landed in the application review process. I would venture to, you know, believe that you all were towards the top of the the stack there. And so, you know, you know, I just want to say, I'm sure you all were following not only the previous applicant, but you all Monday morning quarterbacking the previous eight or nine that we've, you know, have that have come before us. You know, one of the things that I I have as a as a bit of a concern, you know, which I mentioned to the previous applicant, is the proximity, you know, to perhaps, you know, the our public library, our main public library, right? A place for folks to come together, you know, to still experience something for free. There are many places where you can, you know, still do that. You know, sadly, not only in our community, but in our society, there's that as well as, you know, the homeless shelter that we have committed to building around the corner on Second Street. All that to say that that I have no doubt, given the comments from folks and and the vote of confidence and 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 the just the the remarks that folks share, the heartfelt remarks that folks have shared, that that you would be a responsible neighbor, steward and partner, and maybe help be a part of those solutions as well. You know, I appreciated Mr. Magaña joining us, you know, and and, you know, because his track record and then his commitment to the Downtown Management Improvement District. You know, it's 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 a long road. It's 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 evolving challenges. But I have to say that, again, just given the totality of your application, your presentation, the remarkable public outreach that you all, you know, did is much appreciated and doesn't go unnoticed. To Mr. Torres, you know, you highlighting each individual business entity address that you visited, you know, also very much appreciated. And, you know, just the the callers, the emails we received speaks to a lot, as well as, you know, the the former mayor and council member from from Malibu. Those are all, you know, just strong endorsements and and speak to folks' direct knowledge, experience in working with you all. And so, I too am prepared, you know, to support with that, you know, just kind of, I'll say encouragement to to, you know, really kind of like, you know, be that partner for those folks who have had, who have long carried that torch and that commitment to improve. Who have long carried that torch and that commitment to improve our downtown, you know, revitalizing it. There will continue to be evolving challenges, you know, not only with our, you know, homeless. Population, but but, you know, who knows what the future has in store. But I will say, you know, Ms. Elarosa, the. Compassion and energy that you project even virtually, you know, stands out to me. And, you know, just further gives me that confidence that you will be that good neighbor and and, you know, steward of of. You know, our our downtown. And so, you know, I am prepared to give you my trust. You know, and with that, you know, just highly continue to encourage you to to help us make our community. You know, safer, stronger and and just thrive to to the potential that we all aspire to reach, right? And so, you know, if challenges present themselves, just know as you're well aware that these permits are renewable every twelve months. And it is something that, you know, not only us as commissioners, but I'm sure a lot of stakeholders will take, you know, particular interest. And so, you know, if approved, I will say to you and my. Heard me saying this, but you know, it's like, you know, wish you the absolute best and much success. Because in your success or your successes, our success with the community benefits that you will you will have. And so, you know, thank you for. Taking that step to to show interest in expanding and growing your business here in Oxnard. Your presentation and your application were truly exceptional and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Dr. Lopez. Commissioner Sanchez.
Thank you. Thank you Chair Chavez. It's it was a very good presentation. Everything was just very, very good presentation, everything. Your staff that were on on this as well. The the only thing for me is. And if you did get a get approved, obviously, you I'm sure you're going to be a very, very good tenant for for us here in the city of Oxnard. For me, I have a little bit of of some issues with with this and it has doesn't it's not. Like from from your application, has to do the location that it that it was. Placed in a in a place in in downtown Oxnard where it's close to a faith based nonprofit. And a homeless shelter, a homeless shelter at point, some point it's going to be built. And so, you know, so there's I have a sort of a. Issue with that and. So I probably will not vote for it, but you know, wish you the best. Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Sanchez. Any additional comments from the Commission? Staff. I believe this is our first equity application that has come before us. Can you just give a brief summary as to who qualifies to be considered an equity applicant? And what are the criteria for them to be able to be that?
Chair Chavez, I'm happy to start the discussion and Jose and Scott are available to jump in as well. This is actually our second local equity applicant. The first was the FGH project just off Rose in the the Best Buy Center. The our statute lays out a range of of regulations. But the kind of the key factor for local equity is that at least forty percent of the business has to be owned by individuals who. Actually live in Oxnard. That's not just an Oxnard address, but they have to state under penalty of perjury that this is where they live. This is their primary residence. And based upon that criteria, there were three of the sixteen. Potential applications reserved for those who meet those requirements. So part of their application as well would also indicate what their ties and connections to the community were. So the staff, the three members staff who did the interview were able to kind of ascertain. Kind of the depth of connection that each of those applicants had to the city. Also, but they it's it's important as well, not just living in town, but also, you know, what are your skills in the cannabis industry, etc. Because it's important to to have both that local local connection, but also be able to run, you know, a good cannabis business with knowledge of that industry as well.
Okay, great. Thank you for that and thank you for additional information. I guess I must have said on my mind that FGH was also one of the equity. For our applicant team, just real quick, and I believe this is going to be from Mr. Cornwell. In regards to security, how many guards are going to be on during the hours of operation?
There will be no fewer than two at any time the business is open or occupied by the employees. We have additional resources. We have a vehicle patrol service twenty four seven. If the business gets a little busy or there's a transfer coming in, they need a little extra help, they can have extra guards there within five to five minutes. Because we do have a couple patrol cars in the Ventura Oxnard area already. So it'd be very well equipped to take care of anything that may need to be taken care of.
Thank you for providing that additional information in regards to the response time. Now, I'm assuming it's going to follow the same trend as our past applicants thirty minutes before. Close opening and thirty minutes after closing.
Yes, sir. Yes, unless something out of the ordinary may come up, that's that's the plan. It'll be the regular schedule. Just want to throw it out there. I don't know if you've heard, I'm also a retired police officer. My background is a narcotics investigator. I retired from the city of Port Oneimi. I worked exclusively in the. Office with the narcotics team with City of Oxnard and the former chief scout. When he was on my team, so I was very fortunate to know and work with him. So bring these skills to this service and try not to reinvent the wheel, but. Like we have some good skills that we provide our cannabis businesses as we do quite a few in Port Oneimi. And I've written no fewer than, let's say, at least fifty plans throughout the state of California. Actually, I lost count, but. Very knowledgeable in the way this business works.
Thank you for that additional information. It does help and definitely no stranger to the area. So thank you for that. In terms of my comments. You know, I. Very impressive presentation, definitely. It was already touched on again in the letter that was sent to us. As far as the neighbor outreach. You know, fifty, I believe, was the number of houses that were actually knocked down and only a very few were actually. Made contact. Business outreach was there. The outreach for the Oasis, the faith base. Multiple attempts, which I can appreciate. Because it you just didn't try once and say, oh, well, we we tried, we we made our efforts. It is also good to hear that there is. Good faith progress in terms of. There was a problem presented to you in regards to the parking, the lighting, the vandalism, the transient. And you did a good faith to make those improvements, which is good. I can appreciate many of the testimonies that came in this evening. Back in twenty sixteen, when adult use of cannabis was you was on the ballot and then ultimately approved. I had the opportunity to. Speak with Chelsea from Sespe in Ojai. And learn a little bit more about cannabis. And then I did my own research in regards to cannabis. And cannabis is a very complex thing. But there's also a lot of benefits to. And as mentioned this evening by many of the the commenters is that there was a lot of benefits to. And I believe Commissioner Nash made the comments that we so oftentimes we. Unknowingly look at it as just more of a recreation rather than the other benefits that follow along with it. I believe it's a better alternative than pharmaceutical pharmaceutical. You never really know what's in those things. But there it is. My concerns still stand in regards to our library and regards to our navigation center. Because I believe those are impacts on the community. And. Again, I can appreciate the presentation. I appreciate the responses. I appreciate the public comment. I appreciate the fact that. There is an effort towards labor, our local labor groups. Especially and and it was mentioned by Commissioner Meyer earlier that we're a very blue collar of community. So we support our community getting to work. We support our community of being protected while they're at work. I myself as a union member, that's one of the biggest things is ensuring that myself and my fellow coworkers are protected. So. Congrats on that for you guys for taking those efforts. And that would end my comments. Any additional comments from the Commission Commissioner Nash?
No additional comment, but I am ready to make a motion.
I'm not seeing any additional comments or questions. And so Commissioner Nash, go right ahead, sir.
Thank you Chair. I move that we find the project to be categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to SEQA. And that we adopt resolution two zero two two dash XX approved planning and zoning permit number twenty one dash five one six dash four three.
Thank you. Is there a second on that motion? Commissioner Dr. Lopez.
I'll second. Thank you.
Okay, it's been moved a second to find the project that the planning commission finds the project to be categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to. California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines Section fifteen three oh one existing facilities and adopt the resolution twenty twenty two double X. Approved planning and zoning permit number twenty one dash five sixteen dash forty three. Special use permit cannabis retail subject to certain findings and conditions. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing and hearing none. Madam Secretary, if you can have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Nash. Commissioner Dr. Lopez. Commissioner Meyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
No.
Chair Chavez.
No.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And we'll go ahead and proceed to our next item and we'll have our vice chair rejoin us. Our next item is G four, project name Starbucks and In-N-Out Ventura Boulevard. This is planning and zoning permit number twenty one dash five hundred dash zero three special use permit. And twenty one dash five hundred dash zero four special use permit. And twenty one dash five twenty dash zero three special use permit minor. This is going to be located at seventeen hundred seventeen twenty seventeen forty Ventura Boulevard. Requests for number one demolish two existing buildings of approximately eighteen thousand square feet and seven thousand square feet. Number two, construct a new three thousand eight hundred eighty three square foot restaurant outdoor patio with a drive through. With twenty three vehicle capacity, parking for seventy three vehicles and landscaping and infrastructure improvements on a. On the one point forty seven acre project. Number three, construct a new one thousand eight hundred square foot restaurant. Outdoor patio with the drive through with a fifteen vehicle capacity, parking for twenty five vehicles. And landscaping and infrastructure improvements on a zero point eighty five acre project site. Number four, approve an administrative parking relief to decrease the number of required parking spaces required by the center. Located at a seventeen hundred seventeen twenty and seventeen forty Ventura Boulevard from two oh seven parking spaces to a hundred and eighty two. Parking spaces. And number five, approve a new sign program for the center, which will provide standards. For freestanding signs, building signage and drive through signage. The project site is located at seventeen hundred seventeen twenty seventeen forty. Ventura Boulevard within the Rose Santa Clara Corridor Specific Plan Zone District. And within the commercial regional land use designation. This is filed by Holly King-Winiger. Of Site Specific Planning on behalf of Daryl White of Channel Islands Marketplace. Our city staff person is Joe Pearson, the second senior planner. The recommendations of the planning commissions find the project category exempt from environmental review pursuant to SEQA Guidelines fifteen three thirty two. And fifteen three eleven subsection A on premise signs and adopt the resolution twenty twenty two double X. Approval planning is only permit numbers twenty one dash five hundred dash zero three for Starbucks. Zonia plan permit number twenty one dash five hundred dash zero four especially for In-N-Out. Zonia permit number twenty one dash five twenty dash zero three minor Plaza del Norte master sign program. Subject to certain findings and conditions. Well, that was a lot. We'll go to our staff first if they have any additional information to provide.
Hello Chair Chavez and Commissioners. I did just want to highlight a few questions that we received from Commissioners prior to the meeting, just for the benefit of the. Commission and the public. So I'll just run through those and then the applicant team does have a presentation that they would like to give. So going through the questions, the first one was just related to the location of the specific plan documents. So for the benefit of the Commission, all the documents can be found on the city's website. If there's any issues locating those, staff is available to help you find those on the city's website. The there's a question regarding the Starbucks ADA parking. And that parking is provided. I believe on the west side of the the first driveway. So all projects are required to have ADA parking. And the Starbucks project will be in compliance with that. There was a question regarding the circulation and. How it was being determined that there would not be any. Or the queuing would not impede circulation on site. And the applicant team will kind of be walking through a lot of that. So I think that will address a lot of those questions. And then there was a question regarding the property owner of the Red Lobster location. So the property owner is the property owner for all three properties. So the so they have been involved in this process. The last question was with regard to the parking study and. The information that was provided in the study. And particularly with relation to the Starbucks numbers that were provided. And the location those are provided from, they were from two locations in Fullerton and La Mirada. And so generally in response to that. The attachment pulls both the hourly parking demand entities published by the Urban Land Institute. And the Orange County slash LA County Starbucks locations. The ULI Urban Land Institute numbers were used for the In-N-Out and Red Lobster. However, they were not available for the coffee shops. As a result, the consultant used the data that was collected from other projects. In a similar kind of urban setting to forecast how the utilization of the code parking amount would vary. On an hourly basis on weekdays and weekends. And generally, it's anticipated that the utilization rates would not vary significantly for projects in the similar setting. So staff is in agreement with the consultant that the samples used are appropriate. Again, since they also do take into account the city's parking requirements. And again, the project team will also be available to add some additional details on that. And then we also received. And then, uh, we also received uh, some additional questions from another commissioner. One of them was in relation to a typo in the staff report. So in the zoning consistency section, it references the River Park specific plan and that should be the Rose Santa Clara corridor specific plan. The standards that are, uh, used in the, uh, zoning consistency attachments do use the appropriate standards. Um, so it's just the title there. There's a question regarding a traffic signal for the, uh, at the intersection. The, uh, the project is currently conditioned to install the, the rapid flashing beacon for the pedestrian crossing. Based on the city's review, the traffic data was provided and other materials. Um, the city traffic engineer determined a full traffic signal would not be warranted at that location. And the primary purpose of the crosswalk and the flashing beacon is really to provide for that safe pedestrian access. Also, the applicant team, uh, has not indicated that they would be closing any other locations. And again, they're available to respond to that in more detail. And then the last question was related to signage in the freestanding, uh, signs. And so I referenced that the attachment D includes, uh, the monument sign that's proposed. There's no changes proposed to the, um, existing freeway oriented sign. And then I know the um, in discussion with the applicant team, they have also included, um, some of the sign examples in their presentation as well. So they'll be able to kind of highlight some of those, uh, from a conceptual standpoint. Um, but generally speaking, all the signs would be required to uh, submit for a sign permit and that sign permit or all signage would be reviewed for compliance with the, uh, approved sign program as part of that process. So that's all that I have at this time unless there's any questions. And again, the applicant team does have a presentation for the commission tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson for that information. Commissioners, if there's no objection, we'll go ahead and take the applicant's, um, presentation and then move into questions. So Ms. Winiger, um, if you would like to go ahead and proceed and and welcome back once again. It feels like you've been here, um, every meeting that we've had over the past few meetings.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
And Commissioners, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
My name is Jeff Bryant. I'm a project manager for In-N-Out. Just real, real quickly, I, I see In-N-Out's presentation is up, but
Yeah, sorry, Jeff. I was on mute. I'm so sorry. Sorry.
I'll, I'll hand it back to you, Holly.
Yeah. So I was just saying, yes, Commissioner Chavez, I've been here a few times and, uh, a previous project was I was working helping behind the scenes on that one a little bit too. So, um, I just wanted to introduce everybody who's here. Um, from In-N-Out, we have Jim Lockington and Jeff Bryant. Um, and I think Jeff's going to speak on the presentation. Uh, we have David Shender here, who's a transportation engineer for both In-N-Out and Starbucks. And we have Beverly Metz, um, who's here from Starbucks. And we also have, uh, Anthony Valdez from Starbucks is a district manager. And we have the owner of the property, Daryl Wright, who owns Channel Islands properties and has owned this this, um, parcel for, um, at least thirty years, if not more. Um, so he's owned it for quite a while and was the original owner and one of the architects of the Rose Santa Clara specific plan itself. So, um, anyway, with that, I will let Jeff start the presentation. Thanks, Jeff.
Holly, uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, again, uh, thank you everyone for your patience and, and hearing us this evening and giving us the time to, uh, to, to come here before you this evening. So this is the site plan that we have proposed, you know, showing In-N-Out, we have the frontage across Ventura. And, um, you know, if we can move to the next slide. Uh, this is just an example of a three D rendering of our proposed building design. We have a, a coastal, um, a, you know, floor plan to help match and be contiguous with the area that, that, uh, with arches and more of a Spanish style, Spanish tile roof, um, to help blend in with in the area. And, um, you know, be a better part of the city. Next slide, please. Uh, just to give everyone a little bit of background, um, as far as In-N-Out goes, we were originally started by Harry and Esther Snyder back in nineteen forty eight in Baldwin Park. We've since grown after being the, the first drive through, uh, restaurant in California. You know, more than seventy years later, we have over three hundred and seventy five restaurants at this point. We remain a family owned business. Every single In-N-Out location is a hundred percent privately owned and operated. We do not franchise, which helps us provide better service, maintain, you know, better connections within the city and, um, you know, the areas that we operate. Uh, Harry and Esther's very own granddaughter, Lindsay Snyder, is the president of In-N-Out and she holds the firm, uh, foundation and core values originally set by Harry and Esther that made, you know, so many years ago. Next slide, please. In-N-Out's mission statement is we are here for the purpose of providing the freshest, high quality foods and services for profit and a sparkling, spotless sparkling environment whereby the customers are most important asset. Providing a team oriented atmosphere whereby goal setting and communications exist and to provide excellent training and development for all of our associates. And the third most, uh, our third purpose is to assist our communities in our marketplace to become stronger, safer and better places to live. We really believe in partnering and being good neighbors and good members of our, of the communities and everywhere that we operate. Next, next slide, please. Sorry, can we get the next slide, please? Sorry. You need to go back real, real quick. Uh, as, as far as the benefits, uh, that come with In-N-Out restaurant, you know, we, we are an existing business and have been in Oxnard for quite a few years now. But as far as additional benefits that will come from a, a better relationship in another restaurant here. One of the most important things that we bring are not only jobs, but well paying jobs, you know, in, in and out is we're consistently well above between fifteen to twenty percent above minimum wage. And we've recently been, uh, ranked as the third best employer of any, any company to work for. We pay the highest wages and in the quick serve restaurant category and our new jobs will not only provide entry level, but also more skilled le- level restaurant jobs along with the added benefits to enter the store management and to move into corporate positions. Um, the community youth that, that tend to be the, the base of our uh, associate base, uh, will learn the value and be rewarded for their hard work and may even find a lifelong career within and out. As far as the location where we're proposing in, in Oxnard is our second restaurant, uh, we're revitalizing it in an empty commercial center. There's going to be a brand new, family friendly, well lit, well maintained, safe In-N-Out burger restaurant with an attached, attached outdoor patio that's going to serve the community. Um, as, as Joe mentioned, we're also putting in a pedestrian crossing. This is the only crossing, um, on this particular section of Ventura Boulevard. Um, otherwise people need to walk about, you know, quarter mile up to Auto Center Parkway. So, uh, the entire site's going to be newly landscaped with water conserving irrigation designed, state of the art storm drain, uh, water quality improvements, not to mention the tax benefits of having another restaurant and having the jobs to benefit the community. Next slide, please. As far as the continued partnership and this is just a brief snapshot of the last three years of, uh, our support and our role within, within the city of Oxnard. Uh, the column on the left shows direct, um, contributions, uh, the majority of which are coming through youth recognitions awards. It's important to recognize the youth by giving, um, you know, encouraging our students through, um, through the, uh, awards that are offered, you know, burger certificates. Um, and in the last three years, we, we've donated over sixty five thousand dollars strictly within the city of Oxnard. Uh, if you look at Ventura County as a whole, we have two separate foundations. We have the In-N-Out Foundation, which the purpose is to assist children who've been victims of child abuse and to prevent others from suffering a similar fate. We've, we've donated nearly a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the last three years. Um, one of our, our more recent foundations is the Slave to Nothing Foundation, which is a, which supports organizations that create, educate and assist in solutions to eliminate human trafficking and assist individuals and their families to gain the freedom and healing from, from substance abuse. Um, and you can see that we, we've donated sixty five thousand dollars in the last three years and we, we are obviously expecting to continue this trend and be very active both in the city and within the county. Next slide, please. Uh, there's a request from some of the Commissioners that was brought to our attention about some of our, the signage that we have on site of, for what we're proposing. This, uh, will hopefully look familiar to everyone. I hope we, we all have, uh, our, our patrons of In-N-Out, uh, who are watching. But this is just an example of our menu board and some of our drive through signage and monument signs. Next slide, please. Uh, as Joe mentioned, we're, we're proposing to leave the existing sign, uh, but In-N-Out and Starbucks would be adding in our panels along the bottom just to increase our exposure and, and this is what we're proposing to, to add into. Next slide, please. So we, we have had a lot of questions about traffic mitigation and there's some concerns about some of the lines and some, some of the issues that we may have. We have, uh, this site has been well designed above the minimum requirements and it's intentionally designed to provide and effectively manage substantially more than expected traffic. So we have well overdesigned and overbuilt our, our, our restaurant here to be able to manage not just worst case, but e- even, even worse of a worst case. You know, we're, we're only required to have seventy eight, uh, parking spots. We have ninety three total that are proposed. Next slide. Uh, as things get busier, In-N-Out, um, we're actively involved in, uh, managing our drive through lines and our drive through lanes. And, um, so to that end, we installed dedicated drive through lane cameras that allow our managers and our associates to monitor the number of cars in line at any given time. We have automatic procedures and protocols that as soon as there's ten or more cars in line, an associate is automatically deployed with a handheld menu board and an order processing terminal for taking orders. The associate also has a headset to communicate with the restaurant and so has the ability to immediately request additional associate assistance or extra delineators for traffic control if necessary and additional support. One of the other new, um, improvements that we've, uh, included in our site plan is an associate walkway because our, our associate safety is of utmost importance during this time that they're working outside of the restaurant. And so we have a dedicated walkway that provides shaded umbrellas. So in, in the sun in the summer, um, you know, it provides them a, a reprieve and, you know, shelter from the elements, um, so they can stay there separated from the traffic. They're not walking in, in the aisle. So on the next three, um, slides, we're going to see kind of the progression of how we anticipate the traffic to come through. Next slide, please. Uh, the first one shows a, a stack of eight. So we have eight cars in the drive through lane, you know, pretty, pretty standard. But as things get busier, we have a second lane drive through that we'll be able to expand into. Next slide, please. Which we can accommodate up to twenty three cars going through. And this, this is anticipated to be enough based on our traffic accounts, based on the, our other restaurant in Ox- Oxnard and the surrounding area. Um, we have our associate who's, who's listed in there as well. But we're always preparing for the worst and, you know, there are times where there, there may be a little bit more traffic. We may have a couple more issues. So we have designed this site intentionally to offer a contingency plan to make sure that we don't impact the neighboring businesses to, to make sure we don't have traffic going out to Ventura Boulevard. So in the case that it's absolutely necessary, and again, the traffic study and all of the numbers, everything we've looked at, we don't expect this to be the case, but we want everyone to know that we are prepared for it. Next slide, please. So in the event that we have just a, you know, the perfect storm of a lot of cars, a lot of hungry people who want, want to come get their hamburgers. Uh, we will deploy three, uh, associates who will be outside managing, taking orders, directing traffic and, and ensuring we can, i- in this case, up to forty cars can be in our drive through lane at any given time. As far as parking goes, I know while we're in front of those parking spots, we encourage all of our associates to be parking back there. So there won't be much traffic coming in and out in the event that someone does need to exit because we have our associates that are deployed and actively managing the traffic. We're able to hold up cars in, in, in the queue, be able to back people out effectively and get them going where they need to go. And next, next slide. That, that, that should be the end. So, um, I hope we've, we've covered all the bases, but I am available for any additional questions after, uh, the rest of the presentation.
Thank you, Jeff. Oh, I'm sorry, Chair Chavez. Do you want to, am I, I okay to speak?
Yeah, I just had a quick question to our staff real quick. Are we supposed to be taking these separately or together? Because if they're together, I would just like for us just to run into the Starbucks one also.
Chair Chavez, staff suggestion is that we continue with the presentation with the Starbucks project. There are separate resolutions for In-N-Out and for Starbucks and the sign program. But we believe that everything should just be heard at once. So you can think about the proposal as a collective whole.
Sounds good to me. Ms. King, please.
Okay, thank you. Um, Commissioner Chavez, also, I, i- if you don't mind, I'd like some clarification from staff and maybe, uh, Joe and Scott, uh, Colitz. If the presentation that Joe would normally, Joe Pearson would normally present and it's in your staff report, um, I just want to kind of refer to it as well because we were told as, um, applicants not to be redundant. So, uh, we have kind of abbreviated, um, presentations just for that reason. So you know, referring to that, the architecture and the site plan and those types of things. But I do understand that this, you have a PowerPoint presentation in the back of your staff report. So I just want to also kind of include that as record of our presentation. Um, so, um, with that, I'll proceed with the Starbucks presentation. Well, next slide. So this project is Starbucks. It's, um, going to be, uh, right east of the In-N-Out proposed site. Uh, you may remember El Torito used to be there, the Excel menswear is there now or has been there. Um, we would propose, we are proposing to demolish the entire, uh, building there and redesign it to be a Starbucks, uh, with the parking in the rear uh, and a patio in front. Next slide. We've designed it to meet the requirements of the specific plan, Rose Santa Clara, Santa, Rose Santa Clara specific plan, which is, uh, mission style. And so we have muted colors, uh, mission style, Spanish tile roofs and, um, muted colors, uh, browns, and we have the, the wood trellis, um, kind of showing the mission style that is you know, in the guidelines for the Rose Santa Clara plan. Next slide. Here, I, we're just showing you the different, um, this is the, the one, uh, up on the upper, uh, left corner is, uh, the street, uh, perspective. And, and then the, uh, another street perspective, uh, on, on to the right and uh, on the very bottom, you see, uh, where the drive through, um, the drive through exit. And the additional driveway we have. Oh, that's, I'm sorry. That's what I wanted to bring up on the previous slide, if you don't mind. I'm sorry, previous slide. Uh, as part of the, um, as part of the meetings that we had with the city of Oxnard and the DAC meetings, uh, the need, uh, arose for an additional driveway. So you'll see, uh, right, uh, east of the, uh, proposed Starbucks, there's going to be an additional curb cut proposed uh, and an additional driveway to allow, uh, those exiting, uh, the drive through from Starbucks to exit right on. right onto Ventura Boulevard with a right turn. And of course, with uh those improvements and on In-N-Out's uh sidewalks as well, we will be improving all the sidewalk areas and the ramps to meet current ADA requirements.
I'm sorry, Ms. King, um, just for a quick step, can you move the cursor to um show what she was referring to? Um, in regards to that extra driveway? Okay, thank you.
Well, Chair Chavez, if I may make a request also.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, is it possible to change the view so that the um so that the, the PowerPoint is the vast majority of the screen and then the person is the, the small side? Um, it's just really hard to see the detail as we're talking.
I think that's on your own side.
Is it?
Should be a little like two lines next to the screen and you should be able to move those to the side to adjust them.
Oh, there you go. Appreciate you millennials.
I'm sorry, Ms. King, please continue.
That's okay, that's okay. Um, if you could just go, uh, uh, I'll say next slide. Next slide. Next slide. Uh, also, um, it was requested that the plant, um, that uh planning commissioners were interested in seeing what the proposed monument sign and some other signs would be for the Starbucks and this would be the proposed monument sign. And it would be consistent with the sign plan that is proposed and it also is consistent with the Rose Santa Clara uh specific plan, which actually calls out these types of monument signs, uh mission style monument signs for the, the area. Next slide. These are some other signs. I, we weren't clear exactly. These are also in our package in this staff report. So I, I just w- went ahead and put it onto a presentation. If you had any specific questions about any of the signs. Next slide. Um, I'm sorry, some of this got jumbled. Uh, one of the things I wanted to uh just present really quickly, I know it's late. But I wanted to let the planning commission know that this project didn't just get proposed and put on your planning commission agenda. It's gone through a lot of back and forth with the city, lot of individual meetings with the transportation staff, the city engineering staff, the fire department, planning to staff as well. And so I wanted to just put a quick timeline on here. We've had three submittals um after we got DAC comments from all the departments. So from May 26th, June 23rd, we got DAC pop comments. We sent it back to the city in August. We um, the city had another DAC meeting in September. We sent it back to the city with changes again on October 15th. We had our third DAC meeting on November 3rd and finally were being complete on November 9th after many, many changes to the project to get the project to where it is today so that you are seeing the final product of a lot of planners, engineers, traffic people uh all coming together and getting these plans to work together and plans to work for this area. Next slide, please. So I just wanna, I, I know it's late, so I'm just gonna kind of go over really quickly. One of the issues was queuing and stacking, um, as you saw from the In-N-Out um presentation and also for Starbucks. Uh, the required drive-through spots are eight. For Starbucks, where uh we have a 14-car queue which allows for the greatest capacity for the drive-through that's, that is, that we could do for the site. Starbucks has, um, I think they said 28 and they can accommodate more traffic, the additional traffic. Uh, we did a traffic study and it was uh concluded that because of there's already good levels of service in the area, the additional traffic that we will generate for Starbucks and In-N-Out, uh, it would be incremental and would not require any additional traffic conditions or traffic mitigation measures. Um, the traffic patterns that was discussed with the traffic pattern to allow I did uh the need for an additional exit for Starbucks. And so an additional curb cut is now proposed for the right tr- turn lane, turn-only traffic to Starbucks. Next slide. Another key issue with pedestrian safety and the city identified the need for pedestrians to have a safe crossing of the street in case they were at the, the adjacent stores or the adjacent auto mall. So the proposal, because those uh crosswalks are very far and few between the, the development. So the proposal is to improve the sidewalks with new ADA permits and add an electronically monitored crosswalk and provide delineated stone patterns at driveway entrances to denote pedestrian walkways across drive aisles. The parking, the shared parking was um an issue just because um it's not, um, it's, it doesn't meet the minimum standard for parking. But a parking study was also submitted as part of our package, showing that because the site has a three very unique restaurants and coffee shop type uses, there is a reduced parking demand at different times during the morning hours, lunch hours and dinner hours. And therefore the parking is adequate and even ample to provide all parking at any time of day. And the architecture, um, we, the architecture for In-N-Out and for Starbucks went in um kind of a more modern looking buildings and it was uh the city uh wanted to be more uh in compliance with the Rose Santa Clara specific plan. So we both went back to the table, the drawing board and um uh presented uh mission style architecture that the city uh, you know, could recommend to the planning commission. Next slide, please. Um, I just wanted, uh, before I go in the next slide, though, I just wanted to reiterate that we just, um, I wanted to bring all those to your attention so that you know that we brought you forward a thoughtful proposal for these two projects. And I also have Beverly Metz, a project manager for Starbucks. She's gonna, we only have two more slides. She's just gonna kind of go over real fast, um, what the benefits of having a Starbucks in your city would be.
Good evening, commissioners. Thanks so much. And I will be brief because it is very late and my boys just came into my office and said, "Good night." So um, as you know, Starbucks is a um, a community member within Oxnard and we uh are very appreciative of that and we want to continue to do that. And as good stewards, not just in Oxnard, but in every community that we're in, um, we provide a great offering for our partners and that uh participate in the community as well as, as a Starbucks enterprise. So we offer great benefits to them, um, not just from a wage perspective, but also the ancillary benefits that contribute to being a partner. And that's health coverage, uh stock and savings, uh paid time off, uh all the things that you would expect to be, uh, to expect in a very corporately um, uh mindful and a, a good steward to their employees, uh type of company. So it's not just, uh, thank you so much, Holly. It's not just um, uh, the simple things of wage and whatnot. Um, paid time off, which uh through COVID and whatnot, Starbucks has been an amazing partner with their partners um in accommodating um illness pay and things like that and going above and beyond um what that looks like. Stock and savings, health coverage for not just full-time employees, but for part-time employees as well because many of the folks who are employed by Starbucks, even if it's part-time, that is the main income for the family and we recognize that. So um, I, I'm very proud to be a partner from that perspective. Parental leave, education, um commuter benefits, providing Uber rides when people don't have um the ability to have a car to get home in the evening and it's dark, we provide Uber rides and things like that. Uh, and partner assistance when um maybe someone is caring for an elderly. We have something called the Cup Fund where um other partners contribute to a fund to help fund other partners that need help and that are in need. So
Next slide, please.
Thank you, Holly. Um, we are a very diverse company. We support diversity um in every way, not just in our internal aspects, but also with our suppliers, all of our consultants and um support um in every way ca- every way that we can for a, a diverse partnership that includes employing small businesses and um as our consultants and also giving back to small businesses to um become suppliers. One example is um, a supplier who may provide coffee cake. Uh, we look for those that can be either a um company that is giving back to the community by hiring people that are in need. Uh, they're either um coming out of a distressed place, um, coming out of um incarceration or something like that where they need a leg up, need a job. So we help companies that will provide uh a, a factory where they build the coffee cake that we can sell in a store. And so we have partnerships like that that frankly, we don't talk about too much, probably more and not enough that we should, that we support. And then the last thing I just want to say is the food share program. Um, any food waste that we have at night, we donate all of our foods. Um, we have partnerships all across the, the land where they come in um after hours and they take our, our foods before they spoil that we can't sell. And we provide them to shelters and things like that for people in need. So um other than kind of the obvious of creating great jobs and a great place for, for the community, we try and give back in every, every way that we can and be good stewards to the community. So um we look forward to continue to do that within Oxnard and um hopefully get to do it here as well. So thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, uh Chair Chavez. We're done with our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. Okay, so commissioners, well, um, I don't believe we had anyone sign up for this item. Do we wanna continue with trying to do public hearing first and then go into questions or should we do questions? What is the pleasure of the commission?
Let's do the hearing for public comment just before it gets later for folks.
Okay, so let's go ahead and open the public hearing for this item. Madam Secretary, just to confirm, we did not have anyone sign up and the those that did sign up, they're actually a part of the applicant team.
Correct.
So then we'll go ahead and follow AB 361. Um, the three-minute time, if any members that are currently on the call wishes to speak on this item, you can use the raise hand feature. Um, and then you will be called on. So it'll be time for three minutes.
And Chair Chavez, this is Scott Colitz. Uh, while we're going through the three-minute clock now, uh, I just want to remind the planning commission that there's a procedural item that might need to happen. Uh, your meetings are not supposed to go beyond 11 o'clock and plus we have the vote of the members to say, yes, let's extend beyond that. Uh, we're not quite there yet. So maybe that gives us a collective goal to uh, to get there. Uh, but if you do push that limit, uh, we will remind you as we get closer to those magic hour.
Bradley? You're not asleep yet, right? Why don't you take the, the, the gerrylies out one more time?
Um, for the pleasure of the planning commission, um, Chair uh Chavez gave me permission to take over as chair in case he had to do something else or run out for a quick minute. Madam Secretary, do we, do we have any public comments? Call in or raise your hands.
Um, Vice Chair, no, we don't.
Uh, thank you very much, Madam Secretary. Going on with the chair's uh comments, we'll go into questions right now. If you have any questions, please raise your hand. Seeing no hand, okay, uh Commissioner Nash.
Thank you, Acting Chair, uh, Rihil. I do want to clarify a couple of points. If it is determined that a flashing pedestrian signal at the crosswalk is insufficient and a full signal is required, who would, who would pay for that?
Commissioner Nash, um, that would be the city or Public Works, um, if that was uh determined at a, at a later date.
Okay, thank you. Uh, my second question, um, I, I want to clarify the, this, the, the monument signs. The applicant isn't asking to increase the height of the monument signs, correct?
Um, so the, I guess, are you referring to the proposed um sign program?
Yes.
Um, so the proposed sign program is consistent with the uh specific plan, so.
Right, it was typical to tell from the diagrams if they're, if, 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 if they're, if they're just going to u- utilize the existing monument signs or, or if they're gonna put in new ones or extend the height or, or what?
Uh, so Commissioner Nash, so they are proposing to change the ones that are existing or I guess a better way of putting it is the program, the proposed sign program would allow four signs which are taller than the ones that are currently out there.
Okay, and that would be approved administratively and would come back to this, uh, to the planning commission?
Um, so, Commissioner Nash, the planning commission is essentially approving the sign program itself. So the sign program sets the, the standards. So currently the sign program, I believe, allows for up to six and a half foot tall um monument sign. So as long as the proposed signage was consistent with that program, it would be approved um by city staff. Um, if they wanted to do something different, they would need to amend that sign program.
Okay, so you're saying that, that, that uh the current maximum height of what, six and a half feet? Is that what you said?
Um, that's what's being proposed in the sign program, yes.
So that's, so that is the maximum without an amendment?
As currently proposed, yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all. Thank you. Thank you, Acting Chair.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Nash. Seeing that Chair Chavez has come back, I'll let him resume the duties of chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair, and I apologize. I had to uh handle some business. Commissioner Dr. Lopez.
A couple of questions also. Thank you all for uh bearing with us in this late hour uh here tonight. You know, I uh, we all see a lot of uh questions and, and, and comments and chatter on, on social You know, I, we all see a lot of questions and 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 comments and chatter on on social media and whatnot. These two proposed new sites, both for the Starbucks and In-N-Out, they aren't necessarily to replace an existing, you know, business within the city, but to enhance your thriving business portfolios, correct? At this at this time?
This is a new store for Starbucks, if that's what you're asking, yeah.
Yeah, certain. And it was not with the intention of, of, you know, closing another location, but quite frankly, just to again enhance your your business portfolio.
That's correct, Commissioner.
Okay, great.
And that's the same with In-N-Out. We have no, no, no plans to close our existing In-N-Out.
Yeah, you guys are busy. Both of you are really busy, which is a good thing. And, you know, and this is more for for staff, again, and it's just kind of for the public education benefit here. For staff or folks who have, you know, who would comment like, you know, another, you know, chain restaurant or another, another Starbucks. You know, why doesn't the city, you know, bring in another business? What would you say to to in response to to a comment of the public for that?
Commissioner Lopez, I'll go ahead and I'll take that one. The city, we don't regulate brands, we regulate uses. So as long as there is a an allowed use in a zone, that's what we're going to look for over time. Well, I'll leave it that that's simple. And if there's other follow up questions, we're available for it.
No, that's that's really it. And again, it's it's part of the public education, you know, interest or responsibility. And so no further questions at this time. Thank you so much all for for your great work and for, you know, showing interest in expanding your business to better serve the residents and and visitors of Oxnard. Thanks.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Dr. Lopez, Vice Chair Rahill.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. One question to the applicant team. I'm generally specifically looking at attachment C, but it's released in general to the In-N-Out parking area. I was actually mildly and pleasantly surprised that there are going to be EV vehicle parking spots and clean air van pool parking spots. I would just like to know why you decided to include them. If staff can correct me, I don't believe there's anything specifically in order to require that. Yes.
Vice Chair Rayho, with regards to the the charging stations, that is a building code requirement. That's not specific to the zoning code or the specific plan. But the there is building code requirements for charging stations. And I don't know if In-N-Out wants to add anything to that.
It it's just required by by the Cal Green Code, but it's also, you know, where we see, you know, society moving and, you know.
And thank you for that. And can you comment on the clean air parking spots? Is that in the same? Same reasoning?
Yes.
With the, well, from the Cal Green Code, yes. And then from In-N-Out's perspective, you know, it's it's environmentally friendly and it's, you know. It's the right thing to do.
Okay, thank you very much, Chair Chavez. That's all I had.
Thank you. I have a few questions. If staff can bring up the presentation that has seen aerial view of both sites, please.
Chair Chavez, did that last graphic work or are you looking for something broader?
I was kind of looking for something that had all.
Mr. Pearson has something on his presentation, I think. I don't know if it's loaded.
Unfortunately, because of of measure M, we're not allowed to pull that one up, although we do post that earlier. Before our planning commission meetings actually happen. So we're limited to the two presentations that have been provided to us today. So we could either have this civil planets up right now or the other option is the In-N-Out exhibit that had both In-N-Out and Starbucks and some of the adjacent properties. The other one broader would might be a better fit.
Yeah, you know, we'll start with this one, the In-N-Out, and then jump to the, I'm sorry, we'll jump. We'll start with the Starbucks and then we'll jump to the In-N-Out necessary. But I had a couple of questions in regards to the second drive through that is being proposed. In its current location, there is no median along Ventura Boulevard. So we are expecting people to exit right onto Ventura Boulevard? Or they have the option to make a left turn? And how is that going to impact the traffic? And I, and I'll, I guess I'll throw that to the applicant team, because I don't believe we have a city traffic engineer with us this evening.
We have our own, we have a traffic transportation engineer, David Schender, who worked very closely with the previous transportation engineer. I forget his last name, but Timothy. And he can speak on that. David?
Yes, if you can hear me, I'm David Schender with Lynn Scott Long Greenspan. And the discussion with the prior state traffic engineer was that that driveway would be for right turns in and right turns out.
Okay, again, there's no median along Ventura Boulevard unless something was put in. But I just looked on Google Maps and there isn't no center median along Ventura Boulevard. So what is there to ensure that vehicles are going to be exiting right from that driveway?
The the prior engineers said that signage would be appropriate, so right turn only signage for the driveway exits. And a sign posted on Ventura Boulevard indicating no left turns at the Easterly driveway.
Okay, so.
And then, and also in the close proximity of the existing driveway, which has a left turn lane. The the prior engineer felt and I concur that motorists will find it more convenient to use the left turn lane to turn into the site.
And and when you refer to the site, you're you're referring to the shared driveway, correct? That's on the northern part of the Starbucks?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, commissioners, I still have a few more questions and looking at the time. If I can get a motion to continue our meeting past eleven, Commissioner Nash?
I move that we continue our meeting to hear the decide the, there's this agenda item.
Thank you.
To hear the tape, fulfill the entire agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Nash. Can I get a second? Vice Chair Rahill.
I second the motion.
Thank you. It's been moved a second to continue our meeting past eleven o'clock. Madam Secretary, can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Nash? Vice Chair Weho?
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Meyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Chair Chavez?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, so signage, can you or can staff highlight where that the pedestrian crosswalk is supposed to be at on this?
Give us just one moment. Joe is taking over the controls here.
Okay, and in the meantime, for the Starbucks applicant team, I know it was mentioned that there would be an overflow area on the property if the queue got was completely full. Thank you, Mr. Pearson, for highlighting where that crosswalk's going to be at. Can you also show where the overflow for the vehicles are supposed to go when the queue is already backed up?
Hello, Chair Chavez.
There, yeah, okay, go ahead.
So the queue, which is identified in their main queue management plan, would essentially run along here.
Okay, so as if saying that they entered through the main driveway, the shared driveway, they would back up along the landscape to hook into the queue?
Yeah, so if they did come in this way, they would end up queuing back, turning around and then queuing here. Or if they came in this driveway, they would obviously then just end up again backing up here as well.
Okay. In terms of, I believe it was mentioned in the presentation that the Red Lobster was deficient in the number of required parking spaces. But yet, one of the requests this evening is for a reduction in the shared parking. How does that work out? If there's a deficient number of parking spaces in one tenant on the property, how how can we approve a reduction in the parking spaces?
Chair Chavez, so the the center itself has a shared parking agreement. So parking across all three of these properties are shared. So as we look at the the parking study that is provided and as we look at parking for this center, we look at again all projects together. So that's why even though In-N-Out and Starbucks have provided sufficient parking on their individual sites, there's the parking reduction that's requested because the the Red Lobster, which would also have access to the parking on both the In-N-Out and Starbucks sites, is deficient. So the idea is that the Red Lobster would be using those parking spaces during its peak times when generally the other locations would not be basically using all of the parking. And that's the basis really of the parking study that is provided.
Okay, I get it now. Now, there's no dividing walls between where the Starbucks and In-N-Out's going, separating from the Lob, Red Lobster area, right? It's an easy transition for people to get from one end of the property to the other, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Is the applicant team required to do any improvements to the road other than just the pedestrian crosswalk? Such as safety enhancements of raised median or anything like that?
So they are required to update like the the crosswalks and sidewalks to be ADA compliant if they are not currently. But in addition to the crosswalk, there were no other improvements that were identified as being required for the project to operate sufficiently.
Okay, all right, Ms. King, this could be the before, I believe, Mr. Valdez. Is it the same program that was mentioned before, a handheld in the event that the queue gets backed up? And staff monitoring that?
Yes, Chair Chavez, we are, we are putting the handhelds in all of these new standalone stores. So we would be able to go farther down that line, which really increases the production time we have. And primarily used in peak between seven AM and ten AM every day to support the business. And then as needed throughout the other day parts to alleviate any type of congestion.
Okay, great. All right, that's.
Chair Chavez?
Yes.
If we could jump in real quickly, so there was a error as we looked at the plan. If if we look at the site plan here, that's shown that curb or that kind of the dark line that runs along the street is identified as a proposed raised median.
Okay.
So that would be essentially the raised median along that street.
Now, who puts the the median in? Is that something that the city is already looking into? Or is that something that's going to be coming back later on to the city to determine?
Sorry, Chair Chavez, that would be installed as part of as part of this project. So as far as the improvements that would be made, that median would be installed.
Okay, so then it's more than just signs telling people to right turn out of the driveway. Great.
That's correct.
Um, is there any additional questions from the commission? Is there any deliberation comments from the commission? Vice Chair Rahill.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. So I I believe that at least in this presentation, whatever concerns, at least I had in regards to parking and circulation, and I'm in a specified circulation going in and out of the development, were, in my opinion, sufficiently allayed. Just because in regards to the speaking to both of the drive-throughs with In-N-Out, it looks like the cars will be bunched up on on the property itself. And in Starbucks, how there, when it gets out of the drive-through, it's going to be lined up within the development. I'm going to refer right now briefly to attachment G and highlight the the analysis in the particular sentence that that the vehicle queue management plan quote, will ensure that onsite vehicle circulation is not impeded and that vehicle queues do not extend to Ventura Boulevard. End quote. Why I do believe and which is my more and major concern that the vehicle queues will not extend to Ventura Boulevard. You know, I I don't believe in the optimistic analysis that the onsite vehicle circulation will not be impeded. However, in my opinion, this is a fairly minor concern. And even after circulation will be impeded, which I do believe it will, the problem will be contained in the property. And I don't think it's sufficient enough to deny. And so usually at the end of my deliberation or statement, my goal is to convince my fellow commissioners to support the position which I plan to approve. However, at this time, I will just say that I will approve. And I advise commissioners to make their own opinions of whether to approve or deny it. Thank you very much, Chair. That's all I have.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Meyer.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. I I appreciate all of the efforts that staff and the applicants have gone through to get to this point. Revising the plans repeatedly and wisely, it would seem to me. Having just recently gone to In-N-Out in Oxnard and gone through the line, I can appreciate both the long queues that In-N-Out attracts. And also that they, I think they probably have the best example of the the traffic management that I've seen in terms of one or more employees coming out to place orders for people in the queue to move things along, communicating between employees. And so so they've they've done it right. And I have full confidence that they can further that in this new location. Having this location, which isn't really very far from the other, only two, two and a half miles, maybe. At first I thought it seemed like overkill, but realizing how impacted the current Oxnard location is, it makes a lot of sense that we'd have another In-N-Out nearby. This is a great location, I think, because the traffic is mostly coming from the freeway, from the one exit. In the other direction on coming from Rice, there isn't a direct link to get to Ventura Boulevard in that. In the other direction on coming from Rice, there isn't a direct link to get to Ventura Boulevard in that way. So I don't see the traffic impacts being too dramatic um for an area of Ventura Boulevard that isn't. Uh particularly impacted by traffic. Um me uh. Going through that area quite a bit as a a regular Costco customer and and some of the other businesses near that area. So I I um I do believe that that area can handle the traffic impacts. And In-N-Out's experience with um the demand management. Uh leads me to believe that they'll take the steps necessary to keep the queue moving to avoid. Impacts from uh the other cars. Um and I think Starbucks' plan is is also good, I think. With Starbucks having so many locations nearby. I don't see that as contributing dramatically to an increase in traffic there specifically. Um but I think it's a it's a good partnership and and they're definitely complimentary businesses. Uh hopefully, Red Red Lobster will benefit from having um some active and successful partners uh there. I do appreciate that uh the 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 jobs traded are are. Positive entry level jobs, uh especially at uh In-N-Out, knowing the the kinds of salaries and benefits they provide. Um and the opportunities for uh growth within the company, so that's encouraging uh from a bigger picture. For our Oxnard area youth. So I do feel comfortable with um the efforts that have been taken place so far, and um I feel comfortable supporting this project.
Thank you, Commissioner Meyer. Commissioner Nash.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. Um. I think that this is a great reuse of a. Uh for all intents and purposes, dead parcel of land uh that couldn't support retail or didn't want to support retail. So the uh. I remain concerned about the crosswalk because I think cars tend to go a little fast on the stretcher road. I would not be at all surprised if. I don't wanna be a Debbie Downer here that because of a pedestrian getting injured. That the city will have to install a S signal at this at this intersection in order to protect the people crossing. Uh Ventura Road from that parking lot, because there is nothing that leads me to to believe that these. Uh two businesses will be any less um crowded than their existing e- establishments. Um for whatever reason, uh Venture Oxnard and Ventura County, we we love our, we love our Starbucks. And we love our In-N-Out. I mean, it's 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 remarkable when you consider. The number of In-N-Outs that we have along that stretcher one oh one from Ventura to Camarillo, it's it it's incredible. And they're always crowded. Um I don't go to the Oxnard In-N-Out because. It is always a forty-five minute wait. It it's i- i- it's remarkable and, you know. Congratulations on on a wonderful, you know, business model. People, people love you, and I hope that. I hope that you have reward Oxnard's loyalty by by maybe moving your corporate headquarters here to Oxnard. Wouldn't that be fantastic? Um sorry, Seattle. So I do, I I I will support this proposal and um. I appreciate the applicant's team uh from for finding a uh a reuse for this for this for this property.
Thank you for your comments, Commissioner Nash. Any additional deliberations? Um I'll just say real quick, um you're taking two giants, and it was already mentioned that. Could fill up their drive-through queue in seconds. Um we see it at the Camarillo location off of Carmen Drive. Um that one's always backed up. We already heard about the Oxnard location of Espinide, that one's always backed up. I feel like there should be some type of like fast pass, fast track, something similar to what LA does on their freeways that say. No, I gotta pass, I can go to the front line uh in in and out. I like the concept. I think it's a really good concept that it is taking existing land. It's, yes, it's knocking down the buildings, but it's rebuilding the buildings in a way that, one. You're not putting the drive-through in front, you're putting it behind. You're allowing the public to be able to be in front on the patio, enjoy, you know. While they're eating and having their conversations, start looking around and then now they're gonna go across the street and look. I kinda share the same concerns with Commissioner Nash, and I ask that our city, when they are installing those rapid light beacons. That they install three. One on each side of the sidewalk and then one in the middle. Because if I'm correct, and it's been a while since I've been out there, this is pretty much five lanes. Across, when you also taking consideration the median. This is a pretty long stretch of. Uh a road that people have to actually cross to get from one side of Ventura Boulevard to the other. I like the idea of the traffic management plan. There is a contingency plan in place. So that if they exceed their queue in their drive-through, they have an overflow uh that goes for both Starbucks and In-N-Out. I like the fact that they are trying to keep in line of the concept of the Rosa uh Rose and Santa Clara. Uh specific plan as far as the designs go. And I can also appreciate that they were thinking ahead about installing that um. That that essentially a third driveway, um so that Starbucks customers exit right um onto Ventura Boulevard. I can't really find any issues with this project. Again, it's meeting the standards for the the traffic. The traffic is the big one for me. But it would just be my recommendation that we do have three beacon lights along that crosswalk. To ensure that people are seen. I see the issues that Woolley has next to Driftwood School. Where it's only two beacon lines and one of those beacon lights are covered by a tree. I've reported it multiple times. I've suggested adding a third beacon light. Sometimes pedestrians, they are nearly hit along Woolley Road, so that's a huge concern. Um but other than that, like my other commissioners, I can support this as well. It, again, it is a good project. It is designed well. Um and I believe it's gonna bring a lot of great success, and it's good to know that it's not going to close another location. These are addition. And um I agree with Commissioner Nash. If In-N-Out is inclined to put a satellite office in Oxnard, you know, I don't think we will object. Um but definitely, um it's a good project, so thank you uh for um. Creating such a a great design and working with our staff. I know it was a lot of back and forth. Um but you finally made it to the planning commission to um work it all out. Thank you. Commissioner Nash.
Thank you, Chair. I I do wanna point out one uh shortcoming. The driveway that has a right turn only onto Ventura Road, uh Ventura Road uh dead ends. So it seems like people will make a left turn unless there is. Unless there are barriers pu- put in place, and so I hope, I hope the applicant and and our planning staff can. Uh find a a resolution to this, to this problem. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Nash. I that road. That's still Oxnard, right? Or no, that goes into Nylie Acres, if I'm correct. So that would be probably something we have to work with the the county. But okay, any additional comments or questions from the mission? Uh Vice Chair Raho. Uh Vice Chair, you are on me.
Oh, the first time.
Everyone gets it at least once.
No.
You were the last one.
Okay, I I'm over it now. Um I move staff's recommendation um to find the projects categorically exempt. Due to fifteen three thirty-two and fifteen three eleven A, adopting the resolutions. Approving Planning and Zoning Permits Number twenty-one dash five hundred dash zero three. Twenty-one dash five hundred dash zero four and twenty-one dash five twenty dash zero three, subject to certain findings and conditions.
Thank you, uh Commissioner Dr. Lopez.
I'll second. Thank you.
Thank you. It's been moved a second to the planning commission, find the projects to be categorized exempt from environmental review pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. Guidelines, Section fifteen three thirty-two, Infield Development and fifteen three eleven A. Purpose signs and adopt a resolution twenty twenty-two double X, supr- approving planning and zoning permit number twenty-one dash five hundred. Dash zero three, special use permit Starbucks, planning and zoning permit number twenty-one dash five hundred dash zero four, special use permits in and out. And planning and zoning permit number twenty-one dash five twenty dash zero three, special use permit minor Plaza Del Norte. Master sign program, subject to certain findings and conditions. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seen and hearing none. Madam Secretary, can we have the roll call, please?
Vice Chair Weho?
I.
Commissioner Dr. Lopez?
I.
Commissioner Meyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Nash?
I.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Chair Chavez?
I.
Motion passes.
Congratulations to both Starbucks and In-N-Out.
Thank you so much, Commissioners and Chair Chavez.
Think about a fast pass now. That might be something good.
Thank you all so much for your time.
Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good night. Alright, so we'll quickly finish our agenda, study sessions, reports, nothing's listed. Planning Commission Business, Commissioners, any business to bring before the commission? Uh to Commissioner Nash.
Uh thank you, Chair Chavez. Uh Mr. Colwitz, I I think I'm ready to go paperless on my agendas. I've uh. I'm comfortable, you, I'm comfortable using the uh the uh digital version, so we can save a tree.
Oh noted. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Nash. Vice Chair Raho.
Uh thank you, Chair Chavez. Um just a reminder for us and the public, uh there are two redistricting meetings. Um before our next planning commission, one this Saturday at ten AM and another during the city council meeting on February one. So um I am hopeful to make only one out of the two of them, so I'm sad I won't get to both. So, thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you. Um any Commissioner Dr. Lopez?
Just a quick uh thank you and appreciation to the staff. Uh we can never thank you all enough for. Uh your hard work, uh your dedication and your diligence uh to helping not only uh the applicants. Uh before us, but also uh us commissioners with with our questions and our requests. Uh and similarly, said it before, and I'll say it again to my fellow commissioners, an absolute uh pleasure to serve with you all. I very much appreciate your time. Uh your uh deliberations uh and everything that you all bring uh to this commission, so thank one and thank all.
Thank you. Any additional business from the commission? I'll just say real quick, um I'm happy to announce that um. Through the recommendation or the announcement from Mr. Colwitz for the SCAGS um HPLA. I was accepted along with our Vice Chair and Commissioner Connelly to be part of that. Um housing plan, um I believe it's Leadership Academy um for the Ventura County cohort. Um so we'll, as if we didn't already have enough on our plate, we decided to add more things, but I think it's great. That we'll be able to learn more about housing policies and how to best serve our community, so. Um that's very exciting, so and congratulations to our Vice Chair and Commissioner Connelly for that. As the Vice Chair mentioned, Saturday is redistricting um at ten AM. And for the city of Oxnard, so please participate it. Um everyone, please participate. The last day to submit maps is on February seventh. February seventh, yes, February seventh. Um so. Please be active, and of course, thank you all commissioners for your guys' dedication to our community and. Thank you to our staff. With that, if there's no further comments from the commission, we'll turn to. Our community development staff updates, Mr. Colwitz.
My Chair Chavez, members of the commission, thank you. I I do have a a couple here, but I'll try to be fast. So since our last meeting with the planning mission on the thirteenth, there's been a couple of public meetings that have happened. Uh Tuesday of this week, city council met, and one of the items on their calendar was the Port of Fino Place project that you had all reviewed. That item has been continued to a a future agenda and will keep the planning mission notified of any future actions that happen with that one. So just wanted to share that with you. Um in addition, we had a director's hearing on uh yesterday. Uh and the Los Cortes project, which is a hundred and nine affordable unit, a hundred percent affordable unit project. Um effectively just south of Del Sol Park uh at the corner of Rose and Community Del Sol. That was approved by the director, um so we're excited about that project moving through um the redevelopment of that site. Uh closer to the planning commission, um you recently took action on several items on January thirteenth. Two appeals have been filed on your recent actions. Um so one was the Starbucks project at Vineyard and River Park. And the second one was regarding TD Enterprises at ten fifteen Harbor Boulevard. Um we're working with our uh city clerk and city manager to schedule those for the city council meeting. Um and we'll continue to prize you on what happens with those projects as well, but just wanted to let you know about those. Two other quick things, um you all had a hand in our housing element, and we had submitted that to the state for their review. Um we received a letter back from uh HCD uh with comments and questions on our housing element. We're going through and. Uh uh you know, just trying to uh wrap our heads around their letter. Um and we'll continue to uh let you know what's what's happening with that, if it's gonna result in any changes or not. Um as we're we're working with them, so more to come, but that's just a heads up. Um that's not atypical, uh is what I would also sh- uh share with all of you, but we'll keep you updated. And then the fourth and final thing is your next meeting is on February third. There's only two items on that agenda, so hopefully it's a lighter one for all of you. Um and if you're keeping score at home of the sixteen uh special use permits for retail cannabis. Uh the planning commission has now reviewed twelve of those, which means we have four left. And we're looking at two of those on February third and two of those on February seventeenth is the game plan. Uh Vice Chair Awayho, um since you recuse yourself from our meetings. As I only have two items on February third, um you might wanna recuse yourself from the the later part of that. But since we did continue the elections to the start of that meeting, if you could plan on showing up for the start of that, that would be wonderful. So with that, that's gonna conclude my comments to the planning commission. Again, very thankful for everything that you do and the. Digesting of our packets and our staff reports and um and pushing us as well, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colwitz. So Vice Chair Raho, did you have a question?
Uh yes, I did, Chair Chavez. Thank you. Um in regards to Mr. Colwitz's notifications to us in regard to the two appeals. My question is actually to Mr. Rozelle. Um I know that it was commented that we as commissioners. Could public comment on those items on the appeal when it becomes for city council. I I get how it's legal that we can do it, but um the appearance, I feel that we shouldn't. I I would feel more comfortable if we were to public comment. And at this time, I give no indication that I will or won't, um but if something. Formal opinion could be given to us in regards to the extent that we could do it. Um or if there's um, there's no regulation or law that prevents us otherwise, I would appreciate that because. It feels not, it feels wrong. Um so. So I would just like that option in case, both for the appeals and in the futures. Thank you for that. Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Ms. Rozelle, if you agree to responding to that. So thank you.
Yes, I'm happy to do that just very briefly because the hour is getting very late. The issue with a planning commissioner giving his or her opinion before a public hearing is because it would appear to the the public and to the courts that you could not have a fair hearing. Once you have rendered your decision, then the fact that you are reiterating what you stated at the prior public hearing would not implicate fairness because you've already made your determination, you've already given your position, but I'm happy to to prepare a a short memo which would formalize what I just stated.
Um, I greatly appreciate that, Ms. Rozelle. That's all I had, Chair Chavez. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any additional questions for staff? Commissioner Meyer.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I guess following along with the vice chair's question. Could I get clarity from Ms. Rozelle regarding communication with city council members?
I I'm so sorry. Please go ahead.
No, no, I think you could probably cover it just with that. What what's allowable, what's not allowable? If anything's allowable, that's not within public view.
Okay, yes, absolutely. And and just another extremely brief. It would also depend on when that communication occurred. If it's after you render your public hearing, your opinion at the public hearing, no issue. If it's beforehand, I think that there would need to be disclosures about you know, communications you had with with members of of the public and other elected officials regarding a particular item, but I'll be happy to outline that as well.
Thank you, Ms. Rozelle.
Great. There's no further questions. We'll move to our next item, which is our adjournment item. Since there is no further business before the commission, if there's no objection to adjournment, we will be adjourning to our next meeting, next regular scheduled meeting on Thursday, February third, twenty twenty-two at six PM. As always, Commissioners, thank you for your work. Thank you, staff, for your work. And everyone, continue to remain safe during these times. Thank you and have a great night.
Thank you. Good night. See you next month.
Thank you. Good night.
Thanks, everyone. Thank you, Chair. Have good night.